Good morning and welcome to the Board of Supervisors for our July 11, 2006 meeting. Roberta, could you call the roll?
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Michaels?
Here.
Supervisor Flynn?
Here.
And Supervisor Parks?
And I'm here also. Our next item on the agenda is a moment of affirmation. We don't have anyone here today. I would note a couple of days in history if you'd like. John Quincy Adams' birthday is today and he, like our present President, had a father that was in the presidency before him. It is also the anniversary of the Burr-Hamilton duel where U.S. Vice President Aaron Burr shot and mortally wounded former Secretary of the Treasury Alexander Hamilton. And on the lighter side, it is also the anniversary of the premiere of the Newlywed Games. So with that, we'll move to our Pledge of Allegiance and...
John Quincy died in...
Thank you. And with that, if you'll join us with the Pledge of Allegiance and I'll ask Supervisor Bennett to lead us.
Hand over heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to move from the minutes from the board meetings of June 20th and 24th and continue the June 12 budgetary minutes to July 18.
So we have a motion? Do I? And a second? Seeing no objection to that then, those two minutes will be adopted.
I abstain from June 20th.
With one extension on the June 20th and then the June 12th will be continued to our July 18th. Thank you for that. Our next item on our agenda is our agenda review and I'll ask Mr. Johnson if we have any changes.
Madam Chair, there are members of the board, there are four modifications to the agenda. Requested item 26 be continued to July 18th. That item 35 has a revised board letter to add a recommendation number two. Item 46 has a revised board letter. And item 47, the resolution was not included in your agenda book and has now been provided.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as revised?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no objection, then the agenda will stand as revised. We'll now move on to our next item, which is item seven, which is our consent agenda. So that would be items 10 through 27 noting that we've changed 26.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda and seeing no objections on that, that too will pass. Our next item on the agenda then is our public comment period. And at this point, I only have three cards and our first public comments speaker, thank you staff, is Carol Dean Williams, followed by Albert Alfred Egert. Good morning, Mr. Williams.
Good morning, Carol Dean Williams, 61-year resident. Well, it's finally happened. Roberta has got her way. She's also clerk of the Campaign Finance Committee. She's had the committee lop off Mr. Johnson's head. The county now is a headless CEO. She got rid of Tom Romax, who was the middleman between her and Johnny now, so Johnny's headless. She has taken over the county. Here's the organizational chart right here. She has taken over. Well, we had quite a week last week, Roberta and I. Ordinance 4322, Section 1262, purpose of the ordinance. Finally, after all is said and done, finally, to further these purposes, this ordinance provides full and fair enforcement of all its provisions, unquote. Well, I hated to, but I had an obligation. Poor Linda Parks, poor Linda Parks has violated that ordinance. Here's all of these pages of proof she did not put in plain written language that she approved of her campaign, direct violation 12, Section 1289. You know, you should have had a provision for, to plead guilty, just to plead guilty right now and get it over with, just to plead guilty, or no contest or something. Here it is. And that sweetheart Judy Michaels, she even revised her campaign and still violated Section 1289. It can't be disputed, can't be disputed. It's plain. It had to have a plain and written statement that the candidate approved, Section 1289. You want to plead guilty this morning, Ms. Michaels? Well, Judge Peck is out. Judge Peck is no longer the chair of the commission and those other four is just useless. You know, what you should have done is had a retired judge that's supposed to have been making legal decisions all their life, you should have had just a retired judge on the commission and let him make the rulings in accordance to your own ordinance. Now, this is the ordinance that you passed. That's why I'm turning you in. You must not have read, you did not read this ordinance and you passed it. Your signatures are on it and you violated it without shame, without any worry of retribution, without any worry of getting caught. Mr. Flynn just observed an election in Mexico and they, was you in the area, Mr. Flynn, where they found the 1.8 million ballots after they just appeared out of thin air according to the paper? I hope Mr. Flynn will comment on that part since he was present. I reserve my time for other items.
You have a minute left for other items. Thank you for your comments this morning. Our next speaker is Albert Alfred Egert, followed by Vicky Finan. Good morning, Mr. Egert.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and the Board of Supervisors. I didn't have anything prepared. I just came. I just want to say that firsthand experience living in Channel Islands Harbor, I've watched Long, Bennett, and Michaels' actions and activities create homelessness in our senior citizens moving, having to move from their boats to vans, losing their boats because they can't afford to pay the ransom to the Almar Corporation, the corporation, you know, that said members of the board elected on their own without any public activity whatsoever, secretly if we want to put it. That's the reason why I had to file with the House of Representatives and the Senate Judiciary Committee an impeachment proceeding against said board members for their actions and activities. And I hope that two-thirds of the General Assembly will take care of this bad behavior. Meanwhile, I have a trial, or better yet, we have a trial on Thursday for an eviction, okay? Courtroom 22, 9:00 a.m., simply for electing to stand on my rights. Apparently, you don't like your authority questioned, so you sent your little Almar out to try to snuff it out with the most prominent attorneys in the county of Ventura. Like I said, get a chance. Come on, come on over to the eviction hearing there at 9:00 a.m. in courtroom 22. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egert. Ms. Finan, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Parks. I'm here, Vicky Finan, I'm speaking on behalf of the Beacon Foundation this morning and I would like to voice my concern once again for the order of the agenda. There's at least 22 items and if you count all of the actions that you're requested to take, I believe there are 27 items that relate to the harbor today and only a couple of them are time certain. I think it is really outrageous that you don't take some responsibility in making these things a little bit more compact so that people that might have some interest and concern about some issues don't have to spend the entire day here and they can contribute and feel that it's worthwhile. And the other thing that I wanted to say is that many of these items are in closed session, a lot of properties that are being discussed today, and I believe that the public should have a right to know what actions are going on. I've lost count, but at last count that I had, which was several months ago, you had met in closed session no less than 16 times on harbor-related properties and never come out of closed session and made any announcements. So I don't, what are you guys doing back there? I think the public needs to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments noted about trying to put them all together, all the harbor issues together when we have them all on our agenda. Our next time certain, our next item on the agenda is our board comments and with that I'll start with, how about Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I will submit these names for adjournment and memory to present them to the clerk. Usually I don't necessarily talk about people on the list, but I would like to discuss with you and talk with you about one person on the list. Her name is Henrietta Tico Farrell. And my wife is, was the one that's gotten me interested in reading obituaries because there you can find out a lot of history. She's a genealogist. But Henrietta was born on January 20, 1911, to Eva Anos Tico and George F. Tico. She worked for many years in a registered nurse at St. John's Hospital. She was particularly gentle person with especially compassionate personality. And in 1930, she married Norman Farrell of Oxnard, and just going through this quickly. She, Henrietta, was a direct descendant of Jose Joaquin Tico, who lived from 1750 to 1802 in the New World and in 1767 came from a Spanish village. The interesting part also of this is the people that she was related to and she left behind and they're still living, but one of them is the John Farrell of Camrea, who was her nephew. And I'm bringing that out in particular because he was the one, along with the Donlin family, who started building the Channel Islands Marina over 45, almost 50 years ago. And he has a long history with his aunt and I wanted to bring that out to you for the record. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Flynn. And did you want to comment on your Mexican election visit?
Well, the visit was very interesting. I was invited by the Consul General from Oxnard, Consul de Mexico, and to observe the election and was approved by the Institute of Federal Elections to do that. It was a fascinating experience and if you've followed the news, it was a very close race and it's being contested now. Point 58, less than 1% of the vote separated the two major candidates for president. My job was to visit the polling places called Casillas and observe them and in doing so, I kind of made some comparisons between what we do and what other countries do, in this case, Mexico. Each Mexican who's registered near 71 million who are, has an ID card with a picture on it. And when that person comes in to register to vote in the polling place, that picture and that card are looked up in a book to verify that this person is one who is registered and qualified to vote. So that part was very interesting. In order to prove that they voted, they're put some kind of ink and must stay there for a long time to prove that they voted in the election. And now the election is being contested. And it really makes me feel good that we have elections people in this county that I don't think we've ever had the contested election like we, like there is, in this county I'm talking about only, I'm not talking about Florida or anyplace else, being contested. The system here works very well. As you know, there were several million votes that somehow were not counted and how those were discovered, I don't know. But the count took place, but the candidate who represented the PRD party was not satisfied with it. He's had several major rallies, one of them attracted 500,000 people in the Socorro in Mexico City, the largest public square in the world. And so it looks like he is going to continue contesting. The tribunal will make certain decisions. He will make, present evidence to the tribunal. There are letters to editors in Mexican, in the Mexican press who identify problems throughout the country of voting issues. So that part of it's going to be very interesting. What was interesting too is I attended one rally for a candidate and the interesting part of that rally was the number of people that came to it and the number of, the age spread from babies to people like 90 years old were there. And there were young teenagers wearing bracelets, I love this particular candidate. I would hope that we can have that kind of interest in elections in this country, which seem to be, we seem to be losing. Anyway, that's a short snapshot.
Thank you. Supervisor Long, would you like to go next?
Good morning, thank you. I have a list to present and adjourn of memory of residents from the 3rd District who passed over the last two weeks. And I'd just like to make a note for the board, I know all of us have received final reports from our lobbyists and others on the status of the budget, the state budget and the governor's signing of the budget. And I just wanted to let you know there will be a CSAC meeting in August and in fact, I'm going to have a special, I'm going to call a special meeting the Government Finance Operations Committee of CSAC to discuss some tax initiatives that are proposed for the ballot in November. As it stands right now, that have qualified on our ballot, there are bond measures that total $42.6 billion. There are four initiative tax measures that are proposed and qualified that total $3.18 billion. And we have a proposition regarding limiting, again, the governor and the legislature's ability to raid sales tax on gasoline for non-transportation projects. So give you that update. And just to, one quick note, one of the things we've talked about in the past is to, you know, we feel certainly that we've been able to get our structural budget house in order and we're, and we feel good with this budget frankly, and that we didn't lose an awful lot, but we, there's still concern out there about cost shift and things that may occur over time with how programs are, continue to be mandated to us and implemented at the local level with lower dedication of state funds for maintenance of effort, et cetera. In one of the items that the governor noted in a veto message, and this was on resources to help hospitals with their surge capacity, he basically said that with the return of property tax revenue to local government, the expiration of ERAF, that local governments receiving more tax revenues and we should be able to commit a portion of that to our local trauma systems. So just have to make sure we keep our eyes and ears open and watch what's being said and done. And that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Michaels, would you like to go next?
Sure. First of all, I would ask the board to adjourn in memory of the veterans on this list who passed over the last couple of weeks in the 4th District. And kind of a follow-on to Kathy's discussion, I was at CalCOG last week and we had a long discussion, most of the morning as a matter of fact, was spent on the four initiatives that are transportation-related. And that's a lot of money, but the interesting thing that should the voters pass the governor's initiatives, Go California, we already have a severe shortage of natural resource materials that are used in construction and in transportation projects. Should the governor's initiatives pass, there is going to be a problem getting all of those projects implemented because the sand and gravel and rock products that are needed are not available. We're down to about a 10-year reserve in this county. Excuse me. And with the move that has happened over the years, we have by state law designated mineral resource areas that we cannot get to and that have not been permitted. And the discussion amongst the transportation folks is that because of the shortage, the cost of these projects is going to be much higher, so we're going to get fewer projects for the amount of money and the voters, should they approve this, are going to want to see results. And it's going to be very difficult to implement, no matter how much money is thrown at those projects because of the lack of resources and it is getting to a critical point. So I met with the Southern California Rock Products people and asked if all of these things that the COG directors were saying was true. Yes, it is. So there is going to be some attention brought to the lack of resources. If the voters give us lots of money for transportation projects, we have got to figure out how to commit and where to get those products. So just as a heads up, it's not going to be my issue next year, but you all are going to be suffering with that. And when you use tax dollars for projects that don't happen, voters get upset. So be aware and I will be bringing more reports forward as CalCOG works through this up until the election. And that's it.
Thank you, Supervisor Michaels. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. Just like to point out one thing in the budget that's good news for something that I know everybody on the board has been concerned about and that is just adequate funding for foster care. Five years ago, the state legislatures were getting ready to say this was our, the year of foster care where they were going to try to dramatically increase funding for foster care and at that same time, that's when sort of the real crunch hit at the state level and they ended up cutting funding for foster care. But there was, with the final budget adjustments, an extra $75 million put in for foster care. And I know that our HSA agency is very happy about that and it still doesn't solve all of our problems, but it certainly is helpful and it's nice to see that the legislature and the governor have their eye at least back on the, on that critical issue. The other thing I'd like to ask the board to do is adjourn in memory of the people on this list and two that I'd like to point out. One is Beverly Benz, she was an employee of County Supervisor Maggie Erickson and I know Kathy Long knows her, so I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of her. And also like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of David Dodge. David Dodge's service was last Thursday. David at the age of six contracted leukemia and battled it until age 11, where he finally went into remission, got tagged again at 18 and beat it back a second time. And then two years ago, it came back again and this young man and his life sent such a message of courage to people in Ventura County that knew him and I know Mr. Clay Baum was at his service and he and his family are certainly very beloved in Ventura. But the message that I would just like to send today is how much their strength has, I think, inspired so many people to play bigger, be better than what you think you can be, to do more and to really appreciate the important things in life. So. So David will certainly be missed by many people in Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. I just have a couple of comments. One, I want to thank the Ventura County Fire Department for the wonderful suppression of the Lake Sherwood fire. I was able to actually watch that occur, and it was awesome. And then I think it was the very next day, there was another fire that broke out in the city of Westlake in Los Angeles County. It was nice to see our fire department being able to provide assistance, and they were able to get that one put out in 90 minutes. So that's nice when you have a lot of homes out there. But it is very dry out there, and it's really important, and particularly if you're out there using equipment that could cause sparks and all, you have to be particularly vigilant now. I also wanted to comment, we obviously got a lot of grand jury reports, and they all come out at once, but I have had some frustrated residents calling and asking if they can get a copy of it, and they're not online yet. I do have, you know, it in PDF form. I don't know if maybe the county can put it on our website if the grand jury can't, excuse me, get, have difficulty putting them up, but I think that's important to make them available electronically. So I would just ask that we look into that and see if we can't get those up within the week. I can certainly put it on my individual webpage, but I think this is something that really should be out there on the county website. Additionally, there was an article in the Daily News, I just, when we're talking about legislation in Sacramento and all, and it was a kind of a bio on Assemblymember Richmond, who was, it was, it was kind of a shame, but the headline was, "There is just no place for moderates in Sacramento," and that's the way he fills, and it's a real sad commentary, I think, on our legislature. I also wanted to comment that we had, I think, a very productive Ventura County Transportation Commission Vision Session at the Ventura County Fairgrounds on Saturday, and it was, it was very nice to see that. There is what I consider a lot of hope and vision, and the different commissioners expressed that. We prioritized where we wanted to see our vision in the future, and I was kind of surprised to see that most of the commissioners actually prioritized light rail, monorail, skytran, you know, that kind of non-road type of transport. And I think that's really important. We are hearing from Supervisor Michaels the difficulty we're going to face in the future finding materials for roads. We obviously know they're really expensive, and then places for roads, you're looking out, and I think Orange County is looking to put a road through a state park. So it's nice to see a look towards what I consider better options for transportation. So I was really encouraged with that, that vision, that workshop, and we'll be bringing it through the Transportation Commission. We'll have a meeting and kind of adopt what it is that we agreed to in our workshop, and then bring it out to the cities and the communities, so we can get input also and revise it from there. So that's very encouraging. I know our board actually took the first step in that, so I really appreciate that. And then finally, I would ask that we close in honor of the people on this list, and I also would like to call out a very special individual, James Henry Decker. James Henry Decker got his degree in mechanical engineering and worked for, as an engineer for most of his life, and then decided after 27 years as an engineer programming manager that he would earn a teaching credential. And he did that from CLU and devoted himself to teaching and was a very respected teacher from 1991 to 2000 at Sequoia Middle School. He was a generous, compassionate, intellectually gifted man, sense of humor and optimism, hard work, and really one of the nicer people you could meet. And most recently, his strong belief in community was reflected in his service on the Ventura County Grand Jury for two terms, and was very much responsible for most of those reports that I was referring to earlier. Came out with some great reports, and he was the foreman of our grand jury. So he will be dearly missed, and it was kind of a shock that he died so suddenly. With that, then, we'll move on to the rest of our board agenda, and our first regular agenda item is our Harbor Department, and this is item 38 regarding the harbor launch ramp. Good morning, Ms. Krieger.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Lynn Krieger from the Harbor Department, first of many items, as was mentioned earlier today. The project before you this morning is the approval of reconstruction of the launch ramp. This is coming a little earlier than we expected. The California Department of Boating and Waterways did receive our application based on your authorization about a month ago. They believe that it is a very worthwhile investment because of the age of the launch ramp. Luckily for us, the Boating and Waterways Commission, which hasn't been here in a number of years, was here at the end of June on a site visit that had to do, in part with Ventura Harbor and in part with Peninsula Yacht Anchorage, and a loan application they made. And so while they were here, they went and looked at the launch ramp. Based on that visit, they have gone back and said, yes, we think that this is a project of merit, and we would like to move it along for engineering comments. In order to do that, we need the project to be approved by the board. That does not mean their engineers won't come back and ask for some design changes, but it does put us directly in line. I believe one of their concerns, and this is my comment, not from Department of Boating and Waterways, but there has been, based on the state budget, a recent raid on their budget for $21 million to be removed from their capital projects, which is what this would be, and placed in the Department of Housing for some help with salmon fishermen and loans for their boats, and, you know, I don't know what all else, but there's a $21 million raid, and so they are concerned about locking up what projects they can while they still have some money in that reserve account. So I'm asking you today for your approval of the launch ramp reconstruction project for our 30-year-old launch ramp, to find, based on evidence in the letter and today, that the launch ramp is exempt because it's a replacement project, replacement in kind, and to authorize me to approve the further work that's necessary to take it to completion, subject to the availability of state funds. Obviously, if state funds were not available, this would go on hold until next year's budget, when hopefully funds would be available.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? Supervisor Flynn?
Right. Thank you. There are two launch ramps. Which one is this?
This is the so-called new launch ramp, the one that's 30 years old, up towards the end.
The other question is to County Council. You've reviewed the bidding process and has followed all the conditions of a bid.
I don't think this involves a bid or a bid approval at this stage.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking about the next item.
The next item.
Sorry.
We have a motion in the second, seeing no objections, that passes, and then we'll go to the next item, and that's item 39, and I do have a comment card on that, too, Ms. Krieger.
Yes. The next item is the revetment stabilization. Many of you know that we've been working on that for a period of many years, about five years. This project was estimated, this is for sloughing off of the revetment in the area of Phase 3, which is near Harbor Landing, between approximately Harbor Landing and Marine Emporium Landing. The revetment, or the rock that holds up the dirt at the side of the harbor there, is of different construction than in the remainder of the harbor, and ironically, although it's the newest, has failed first. In working with the engineers, we had to look at a number of alternatives, I think in fact it was 15 in the end, to come up with something that we thought would be attractive and would meet our cost estimates. We were very worried about this bid. We did only get one bid, which I want to make sure is on the record. Our project estimate was $5 million, and the bid came in at 5.3. So we thought, given what's been happening with bids lately, we were very relieved with how this came out, and we would request that you award this bid today. There are a number of recommendations, I, in interest of your time, unless you'd like, I'd prefer not to read them all, but we'd like to see the contract awarded, and you do have the bond and the signed contract as part of your package. And I believe the specifications and plans, I hope, Roberta, are filed in your office. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to go to public comments and then questions, or?
I just have one more, or a couple of questions. This is the one I was referring to. Only one bid for this project?
We don't ordinarily review the bid process throughout, Supervisor Flynn. If there's an issue with the bid process, it would come to us.
Okay. It says that this, you've reviewed the letter, though.
That's correct.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're following the same process that Public Works followed.
Yes, we did, and we worked with County Council, Deputy County Council Dan Murphy, I hope that's his right title, throughout this procedure to make sure that we were meeting the requirements the county has.
Can you use some, not satisfy my question, can you use some reference points in the harbor to tell us where this ripped rap?
Yes, it's between Harbor Landing and Marine Emporium Landing. It's nearly a mile of revetment work to be done.
Okay, thank you.
We do have one public comment card. Ms. Finan?
The reason that I'm speaking on this item is because literally got dropped on my doorstep yesterday a piece of paper that I'm handing out to you today. I had found a document quite some time ago regarding the $5 million that the county has, had borrowed from Department of Boating and Waterways, and I'm curious why we're now borrowing another $5 million from another source, and I have questions about why that is. If the, if the $5 million is the same as this project that we borrowed money for in 2000, in 2000, 2001, 2001, 2002, up to, there's $5 million in it, there's, I'm going to pass this out, I only made one copy of it. This is a document from Department of Boating and Waterways on the $5 million. And I just wonder, is this the same, it's the same project. The project says that it's for revetment to rebuild the banks between the Pacific Corinthic Yacht Club and the Marine Emporium Landing, and that was $5 million. Now your, now your staff is asking for another $5 million, and I'd like to know what happened to the first $5 million? Have we spent that money? Are we getting better rates? Why are we borrowing money in a different fashion? Why is Department of Boating and Waterways doing something different? And then when you look at the staff report, there's a lot of stuff that's missing. We just learned there was only one bid for this project, and maybe it's within the reasonable amount, but what, what else, what work's been done? What, there was 12, 12 options of stabilization according to the March 2002 letter from Mrs. Krieger to the Harbor Department that I passed out to you. So I, it seems to me that the public has a right to have some of these questions answered about this money. Is, what is it? Is it different? Are we doing the same project again twice? It just raises a lot of questions, and I don't know what it means.
Well, you know, what I'd like to do is have those questions answered right now.
Great.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I'd just like to make sure the speaker's finished before we start with the answer.
Were you finished, Vicki?
I, yeah, I just, I'm curious about the money and how, where it's going to be paid from, and all those things, because it seems like we're tying up the same dollars in those two documents.
And did you get a copy of this memo?
I just saw it briefly. Thank you. Yes, I've seen that one before.
You know that one?
I do remember it, even though it's a few years ago. Yes, I believe this was discussed at Harbor Commission meetings on more than one occasion, and particularly with the adoption of the budget, and I know the board knows because we've been here before. We were awarded a loan from the department, approved for a loan from the Department of Boating and Waterways. Ultimately, when we received the loan documents a year or year and a half later, the loan terms were too onerous for the county to bear, given that we can borrow money other places for a competitive interest rate. So with the board's approval, we rejected that loan. We never did take the $5 million, and like most construction loans in the private sector, the way it works is you don't get any money until you spend it anyway. They don't give you the $5 million upfront. You spend it, and then you apply for reimbursement out of the loan. So that loan never happened. What we did instead is go back to the board's, or the county's financial planning committee and request to participate in the county's borrowing instead for about the same interest rate, in fact, I believe it's half a point less, and borrow the $5 million a different way. So it's $1 million for one project, and being approved for a loan doesn't necessarily mean you agree to accept it.
And as I recall from the financial planning committee, when we're looking at, this is Department of Boating and Waterways requirements, they wanted us to basically put up as collateral our harbor.
The entire harbor, not just a portion.
Which isn't generally what you have, not, not just that area, but everything, so. Did you have a question, Supervisor Bennett?
Yes. Thank you for that explanation. The public does have the right to know where the $5 million went, and that's a nice, clear explanation with regard to that. I'd just like to ask a question about, you made a comment, you said, although this is our newest part of the revetment, it's the one that's deteriorating. When did this revetment go in?
It was in the early to mid 70s, I think around 1972.
Okay, all right. So in the 70s, a revetment went in, and the newest one is failing, so.
Correct.
Is it, I had, somebody contact me and say they really feel like that was designed poorly in the early 70s when that went in, by comparison to the other revetments. This one was not designed properly. Is that a fair assessment, in your opinion?
Let's just say it could have been designed better. The slope is too steep, and there's a layer of what's called marine cloth behind the rocks that was probably not the right type, and the rock was dumped rather than being placed. Usually, there's a big tow rock that's placed, and that did not happen in this case. So the combination of those three contributed to an early failure.
So we wouldn't be needing to spend $5 million now if the wall would have been built better in the early 70s?
Right. There was some savings from doing it that way. You look back at the old records, and the decision was made to go this way to save some money. Wasn't very much.
Any idea, nowhere near $5 million?
No.
May I just ask, what year did you refer to?
Early '70s.
Early 70s, yeah. Please don't hold me to that exact year, but, yeah.
1972, I just want to make, for the record, I was elected, but I wasn't on the board at that time.
Otherwise, the design would have been better.
Yeah. We don't hold the board responsible for engineering, and it is hard to judge, you know, engineering standards, but this was clearly a departure from the usual design.
I pointed out, not to hold anybody responsible, I pointed out that when you come into a harbor that's 40 years old, you inherit all of the complications and all of the leases and all of the decisions of the past, and trying to fix them can be expensive and time-consuming.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Flynn?
And also, you inherit a harbor, which is priceless.
A great thing, right.
Ms. Johnston?
I was just going to make a couple of comments. One, when we go back in history, you have to have the whole history, and at the time, trying to get things done within budgets and the economic conditions at the time decisions are made. One of the decisions made on this building back in the 70s was not to reinforce the third floor in order to use the roof as expansion space. The comment was made back then, one, we don't have the money, and two, if we reinforce it, all we'll be doing is encouraging government to grow. So here we sit in 2006, you can't use the roof as expansion space at the price of acreage. You know, hindsight is great, but at the time, they did what they had to do, and in this case, on the loans, to make it really simple for the average citizen, one one buys a house, if you're sophisticated at all, you shop for your loan to find out how many points you pay and what the rate's going to pay. You don't just take the first loan. Sometimes you get a loan that is guaranteed to you, and then later you discover you can actually get another loan for a lower rate. And in this case, what the harbor did is they were looking for the best rate, and so was the finance committee. So we basically thanked the state for being willing to loan us money under their terms and chose to borrow the money for better terms elsewhere.
I just have a little historical comment.
Do you have your mic on?
Right. I made the motion to do away with the plans on the county center, the first set of plans, came up with the second set of plans, so if there's any guilt here, I plead guilty. But the jail was very interesting, in that utilities were enlarged, larger than what is needed right now in the event of expansion.
Thank you for that bit of history. We have a motion from Supervisor Long and a second from Supervisor Michaels, and seeing no objection, that passes, and we'll go to item 40, which is the last in this section of the Harbor Department Agenda Items.
Yes, correct. Thank you very much. This item, and I will ask Bob Snyder's to join me at the podium, because he is the president of the Channel Islands Harbor Foundation. I am not a member of that board, but he is the president of the board and has done a great deal of work here. We are in front of the board today for only one reason, the county will not be accepting this money. The county will not be accepting this money from the foundation, so there's not a recommendation in here to accept the funds. We're really here to satisfy the requirements of the administrative manual regarding the naming of the structure. There are rules in the admin manual that we have been following, and we are very excited that the Smith daughters, who we've been talking with for a couple of years, I would say, have agreed to offer a million dollars toward the county's $1.8 million commitment toward the boating center to raise that fund, those funds. Their only request, and they debated, I must say, whether they would like the building named after their father or their mother, Bud Smith, in exchange for the million, but they decided that what they wanted to see featured prominently was Channel Islands Harbor, because that was the place that their father had great affection for, and they wanted to see that center stage. So what they've asked is that it be the Channel Islands Harbor Boating Instruction and Safety Center in perpetuity, meaning as long as there is a boating center there, and that there be some display in the lobby, just thanking the foundation, and perhaps a picture of their dad, who did have a key part in the history of the harbor, and obviously a soft spot for young people with the funding he's provided to the Boys and Girls Club and other kinds of programs like that since his death.
I would just like to add that we're very pleased with the Smith family's generosity with this donation, and I would highly encourage your approval of this naming opportunity.
Thank you. We do have one comment card from Penny Bame, if you'd like to come up and speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Johnson. I'm just here as a citizen, Penny Bame, an Oxnard resident, to personally and publicly thank the Smith family. What an acknowledgement of the harbor that he so loved. And a little bit of history, I know Mr. Flynn will remember this. Probably 15, 16 years ago, Mr. Smith had a moving desire to put an aquarium at Channel Islands Harbor. So we flew to Monterey Bay Aquarium in his small airplane, and to watch him and his excitement at the Monterey Bay Aquarium was a memory that I will carry for many years. So we weren't able to do that in the Channel Islands Harbor for a myriad of reasons, but we do have a boating center, and that I'm sure would be his second love, and acknowledge, thank you to his family and to his daughters, and he is a great, fine philanthropist in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Flynn?
Right, thank you, and thanks to the foundation, to the Martin V and Martha K. Smith Foundation for this recognition. As Lynn will require, remember, not yet, please. As Lynn will remember, you and I met with Sue, who was the chief of staff to Martin Smith, to talk about naming and talk about the bisque. That's when it was not a controversy to talk about. Anyway, I thanked them too. I knew Martin Smith very well, and he was the real, one of the main elements in the building of the Channel Islands Harbor.
Thank you. Well, this should be a pretty easy motion. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second, and that would be to name it the Channel Islands Harbor Boating Instruction and Safety Center. Seeing no objections, thank you, and I think we're all benefiting from it.
Thank you very much.
Just to add comment, I truly thank the Smith family. They've been very generous countywide on many projects, and they have always been contributors to Boys and Girls Club, and do have a love for the youth in our community, and it really is appreciated, this stepping forward in this donation to really, I think, set the bar high for others to really help contribute to reach the goal of supporting this Boating Instruction Safety Center. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly does also help bridge that gap that we have, and that people have asked about and stuff, and I think this is evidence that there was support out there in the private world for the Boating Instruction Safety Center. Thank you.
I would just say it's important to note, too, that everybody supports having a boating instruction safety center, and so it's nice to be able to see it come to fruition wherever it's going to be. The intent is to get some happy kids being able to boat and sail, so that's nice. Okay, well, with that, then we have a motion and a second, and that is approved unanimously, and we can now move on to our 9:30 time certain items. So our first 9:30 time certain item is a very special resolution honoring a very special person, and I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Lynn.
Thank you. I'd like to step down to the podium and invite Andy Oshida to please step forward.
This morning, we have the opportunity to honor a longstanding county employee for his years of public service and support to our community. In looking at a recent newsletter from GSA, it starts out by saying that Andy is one of those people who works very well with others, and I would note that he also plays well with others. In his years with our park service, he has certainly demonstrated both his love for the resources we have and we maintain for the public, and his commitment to public service. Andy Oshida started with us in July 12th of 1976, and became an employee as a park ranger, and then he was promoted to the park area supervisor in '77, and he's held various positions in our park operations since then as program manager and park manager. And over the years, has been a staff member of the Parks Foundation and the Parks Advisory Commission, participated in the United Way Organizing Committee for nine years, the Strawberry Festival Committee for 10 years, and on the Boy Scout Council in Ventura, he also coached youth sports. So he went and carried his love for the community well beyond just his public service and into nonprofits and supporting the community in many ways. He has some spare time, and now he's going to have lots of spare time, that he's going to carry on with his love of golf and gardening and cooking and creating bonsai plants, and spending times with his wife Marcia, who I know is here, I saw Marcia come in, and his three daughters, Kristen, Jamie, and Erin, and four grandsons. And after 30 years, he will get to spend more time with them. He's making a significant life move and going to Oregon to, what's the name of the city? Roseburg. Roseburg, Oregon. And up there, he can get to do additional fishing and golfing and traveling, and although it sounds like he's going to have a beautiful spot up there to live and really relax and enjoy it. So it's been 30 years of dedication to our county of Ventura, to our Parks Department, to public service, where he has really helped to enhance our regional park system for the enjoyment of all residents. And I know with the board today, and I know Supervisor Flynn has some additional words he'd like to say for Andy's service to our community. We have a resolution that represents those 30 years as best we can on one piece of paper, but truly, and every time we get the chance to experience a park, whether it's in our district or just in our community with events that take place so much in our parks, we'll always remember the dedication that enhanced our parks for all of us in this county, and Andy Oshida's dedication for that effort. And on behalf of the board, to present this to you, Andy.
Thank you.
Supervisor Flynn?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may introduce this item by calling up Florence Young, if you would come, please. Florence is the chair of the MAC in El Rio, in Nylund, and Strickland, we have to say, to make sure we cover all the bases. And if Ernie Almanza would come, Ernie, please. And maybe we can have these two great individuals represent the community for us here this morning. But Andy is, has been such a great help in the El Rio community. He has just done a lot, a lot of work, and he is one of the professional recreation majors that we have in the entire county of Ventura. That's his major. And so when putting together the programs that would take place in the El Rio gym, which we found money in other places to pay for, Andy was instrumental in setting that up so that we could have activities that appealed, and everyone could partake in, not just basketball, which Andy and I are great players, but other types of activities that would include just people who wanted perhaps to look at a computer and try to learn how to operate it. Now, the reason for these two individuals, Florence has been, has been a longtime county employee, and a longtime El Rio resident, and she is the chair of the MAC, so she wanted to thank Andy also. And if you've ever been to a MAC meeting, Florence runs it with a iron hand, right? And Ernie, Ernie Almanza, we found a way to name the gymnasium after Ernie. You know, anything that happens in El Rio is sometimes controversial, right, Ernie?
Sometimes.
But everyone came together to do that with Ernie. So Ernie's name, in big letters, is on that gymnasium, and we thank you for your leadership, and especially for Andy's leadership in helping us. Andy came in the middle of often issues that were sometimes not easy to address with the school district, and Marty isn't back there, and she will remember those, so we thank you too. So Andy, with this certificate, I want to thank you for your great work, and it's done differently, and Mohammed Hassan designed it, so it's an honor of you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
If we could have Ernie speak, Florence.
Thank you. Go ahead, Florence.
I've been on the Roger Jones Commission for 41 years. I worked for the county for over 30 years. I met Andy when he was just a park ranger, and the commission was so impressed with his honesty and sincerity as far as the children. My main interest has always been the children, who are going to be the policymakers in the future. And he's a very caring person, puts his heart and soul into what he's doing, and for that, all of El Rio appreciates him and loves him. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to express what I feel. But my feeling is for children, and this is the man that feels the same way. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a great time to thank Andy for all the things he did for El Rio, and not just El Rio. Andy did a lot of things for the whole county and then some. But being from El Rio, I know a lot of the things that he did, and I'll tell you, Andy was so easy to work with. I could call him at his office anytime, and if he wasn't in, he would return the call immediately. So easy to work with, and he, like I said, I can't say it loud enough, he got things done. Believe me, he did. Andy, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Congratulations.
You know Chole, she's been here before, but she represents Nylund Acres on this resolution.
I'd like to also thank him from our community. Nylund has a lot of problems, but one thing we could always count on him was our summer program. He gave us plenty of direction, he gave us passion, and we're going to miss him. Thank you.
I'll keep it short. Members of the board, Mr. Johnson, thank you very much for this resolution, I appreciate it. I'd like to just say that I've enjoyed the 30 years with the county, I really have. And my dad gave me some advice years ago, he said, when I get an occupation, or I decide upon an occupation, find something that you're going to enjoy, and that you can surround yourself with good people. And you know, there's been times when my wife and I have gone back to Hawaii for vacation, then I was ready to come back, and she thought I was crazy. But I've always enjoyed working for the county, also the other agencies that we've worked with in the county. You know, we have some good personnel working here that it's been easy to work with, and so I appreciate all the other county employees that I've worked with. I need to recognize my wife now, Marcia. Marcia DeFrancois, she's, she's been my solid supporter. She has 21 years with the county, and she'll be retiring this week on her birthday, so, you know.
My 55th birthday.
No, but she's always been, you know, really, if I have to say things that I've learned from the county, my wife has been an example to me, not only by her words, but by her actions as to what it means to be a public servant. She's always reminded me, you know, that we're here to serve the people, you know, number one, and she's really been a big help to me, and I appreciate her.
Thank you.
Andy, thank you. Andy and I worked together in the parks, well, actually, we worked together long, long before that, and during the tough times when the parks were closed down and there was no money, or you had to live on just whatever money was brought in. A kinder, gentler soul I've never worked with, generous with his time, and totally loyal. When we got complaints out on the Rincon concerning people who weren't curbing their dogs, Andy went with me, and we went out, inspected and cleaned the area as an example to the campers, so there was little.
Never forget that, John.
It was a real high point of our career, wasn't it?
It showed me what a humble CEO we have.
And when it came to the, trying to keep the bike trails clean, we organized volunteers, and Andy not only went out and, you know, helped with that part of it, but then at the end, when we had the celebration, he was the cook and provided the meal. You're a great guy. Wish you all the best.
Thank you.
And your wife, Marcia, thank you for your service.
I just want to say thank you, Andy.
We have someone from the community that wants to come up and speak to Jean Harris.
Yeah, don't go anywhere.
That's an order.
I've really enjoyed working with Andy over the years, and as a member and the chair of the County Parks Foundation. We share a caring and commitment for parks and for the great outdoors, and I tried to think how we could have found another person that would fit these adjectives that I wrote down here. I think he is hardworking, conscientious, reliable, and cheerful. I think that really sums up Andy and our relationship. He has a remarkable institutional memory of everything to do with the parks in this county, and all you need to do is ask him, and you'll know what's really happening. I want to give him my best wishes, and I want to be sure that you remember the beauties of California, so this is a small gift for you.
Thank you so much, and we wish you a long and happy retirement. Our next 9:30 time certain is appropriately a Parks and Recreation Month resolution, and it proclaims July 2006 Parks and Recreation Month. And it is a recognition and honor of our parks that create communities through people, parks, and programs. Thousands of children, adults, and seniors annually visit our county park facilities and benefit from a wide range of services, including now some free passes for disabled veterans and POWs. And whereas our county parks help to preserve and protect natural resources and promote health and wellness, foster human development, and help people grow into healthy adults, and help adults to live longer, healthier lives, and whereas parks and recreation services support more productive workforces, enhance the desirability of locations for businesses and families, stimulate tourism revenues to increase our total community development model, and support safety and security to reduce juvenile crime, and whereas residents of Ventura County provide valuable support by serving voluntarily on various advisory commissions, such as the Regional Parks Advisory Commission, and the Casitas Springs, Oakview, Pyru, and Roger Jones El Rio Local Piru, and Roger Jones El Rio Local Parks Advisory Commissions. Therefore, the Board of Supervisors does resolve that July is now Parks and Recreation Month, and we express our appreciation to the numerous volunteer park commissioners, which I believe we have several with us this morning. And we urge all Ventura County residents to recognize and enjoy the many magnificent community benefits derived from county parks, campgrounds, picnic facilities, golf courses, multi-use trails, ball fields, and community centers, which provide great value to everyone, and hopefully we'll have another park or two onboard coming soon. I'd like to be able to present this, and Andy, how about I bring this to you? And then we also have some commendations, if you'd like to help hand those out.
Goodness, our director and our deputy director also to come down, Paul Grosso, and Ron Van Dyke, if you haven't met him, he's our new deputy director for the Parks Department, he'll be taking over. I'd also like to invite the chair, the representatives from the group, from the Parks Advisory Commission, maybe Paul Rockenstein, our chairperson, could you come up? Peggy Shalnot, or Larry, one of you, and Florence? And Danny Ramirez from Piru?
Good luck.
You know, there's a few individuals I would like to recognize especially. You know, every so often you find commissioners who will serve for five years, and you know, you're very proud of them, but when you get to be 10 years, it's kind of rare. There are a few people I'd like to recognize this time who have served for 30 years, 25, 30, and 41 years. Florence Young has served for over 41 years on our commission, and Ernie Almanza has about 30 years, and Lorenzo Ramirez, if they could stand and recognize them. Not very often you find people serving 30 years on an advisory commission. And from the Oakview Commission, we have Peggy and Larry Shalnot in the audience. And then from Piru, Danny Ramirez. These individuals have served, you know, 25 years or more, so I really appreciate, you know, someone who's going out of this department, I really appreciate the many years of service that you've served on our local recreation advisory commissions. And also, we have Barbara Kennedy from the Regional Recreation Commission, and anybody I'm missing, I hope not. That's it. Thank you very much. Right, we'll get, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next 9:30 time certain is a really proud item for a really fun person, and it's Irish John Gore. And Mr. Gore, would you like to?
I have a card on that.
I don't have my microphone on, excuse me. Mr. Gore, could you?
I have a card on that.
You have a card on Andy Oshida?
Twenty minutes.
Recognition? The parks, okay. Mr. Williams, I think you had one minute left.
Carol Dean Williams, 61-year resident. To go along with the resolution, you should put up a big sign on all the parks free for the month of July, and let's celebrate these parks, and let's put some teeth to the resolution, and just not have words, let's open these up during the month of July with some banners. Come on!
Thank you for that. I'm actually going to come down to the microphone to present the following resolutions. We have before us this morning, ladies and gentlemen, the 2006 Spirit of the Community Volunteer of the Year, Mr. Irish John Gore. I'm so glad you came. I want to read this resolution to you. It's on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, and it says, "Whereas Irish John Gore has been recognized by the Thousand Oaks Westlake Village Regional Chamber of Commerce Community Foundation as Volunteer of the Year in 2006, and whereas Mr. Gore is a 24-year active member of the Thousand Oaks Kiwanis Club, having served as president and governor of Division 42 Kiwanis International fundraiser, and currently serving as Senior Concerns District Chairman for the Calneva Ha District of Kiwanis International, and as editor-in-chief of the organization's award-winning weekly newsletter, The Thousand Oaks Log, and you will tell us a little bit about some of your editorial and writing experiences, hopefully. And whereas he has exemplified dedicated volunteerism in our community for over 30 years, as an eight-year member of the Hospice Board, a volunteer for the Wellness Community, Hospice of the Caneo, American Cancer Relay for Life, Caneo Valley Days, and the Caneo Valley Historical Society, and as a participant and/or director of several fundraisers benefiting cancer and diabetes research, including a 112-mile bike ride in which he raised $15,700 shortly after being treated for cancer himself. And whereas his devotion to community involvement has led Mr. Gore to be honored as two-time Grand Marshal of Caneo Valley Days, a very rare thing, Ventura County Man of the Year in 1982 for his volunteer work with the American Diabetes Association, Thousand Oaks Man of the Year in 1991, Kiwanon of the Year for Thousand Oaks in 1983 and 2000, Kiwanon, am I pronouncing that right?
Kiwanian.
Kiwanian of the Year for the Ventura Santa Barbara Division 42 in 1986 and 2003, recipient of the Patrick Henry Medalion from the Military Order of the World Wars, the Jackie Kennedy Onassis-Jefferson Medalion for community service, and the John Conlin-Paul Harris Fellowship from the Thousand Oaks Rotary Club. Wow. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors commands Irish John Gore for his heartfelt dedication and service to our community on behalf of the citizens of Ventura County, and wishes him continued success and much happiness in the future. And I present this to you, and what an honor to be able to do this, Mr. Gore. And if you'd have some words for us, I would love to hear from you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. I don't like these honors, you know, you don't volunteer for honors, but I have to tell you, when I go home and look at my wall, they're all very nice. I got involved when I was 12 years old, I was in a group called The Boys Spaghetti back in Ireland, and that was a Christian youth organization, and we had to collect money to keep the group going. And I, every November, I collected money for the BB, and it was a good feeling, going up and knocking on doors and telling the people you needed money to keep this wee group going. It kind of got in my blood. So, it's great to get this honor from Linda, because Linda's known me a long time. In fact, when I first met Linda, I still had an accent, so it was quite a while back. But volunteering is where it's at, I love it. And my wife's here today, and she's a volunteer in her own right, and she supports me in everything I do. Linda said about some of the things I've done, the bike ride for diabetes was probably the most heart-filling one for me, because at that time I'd just come out of six weeks of chemo with bladder cancer. I remember my doctor saying, "Check yourself every 12 miles or so," and I postponed one chemo so I could do the ride, and thanks to the people at Caneo Valley, I was riding for like $121 a mile, and it was just, it was something very, very special. But this is great. So, Linda, thank you so much. Board of Supervisors, thank you very much, and everybody, please, keep volunteering. Thank you very much. Thank you.
That was the first time I've heard him speak without a joke, a Louis joke. Our next person I would like to honor is one of the fastest people in the world, is what I would think. Corey Primm, could you come on down? You think about cheetahs and how fast they can go. Corey has really distinguished himself, I don't know if you've, I'll give this to you too, but seen this article with him featured on the front page of the Star Sports section as one of the fastest people in the nation, and I would like to read this resolution for you, Corey, I'm so glad you're able to come down for this. It's a resolution of the Board of Supervisors honoring Corey Primm for his outstanding achievements and sportsmanship as a member of the Westlake High School Track and Field Team. Whereas Corey Primm, a student at Westlake High School and a member of the Westlake High School Track and Field Team, has excelled as both an athlete and a leader in his community, county, and nation, and whereas he overcame an illness that set back his training to emerge as the winner of the 2006 CIS State Track and Field Championship title for the 800-meter competition with the fastest high school time in the nation of 1 minute 50.53 seconds. And whereas Corey Primm also won the Division 2 title in 1 minute 52.81 seconds and has, and had one of the area's fastest times in the 400, and was the county's 1,600 champion. And whereas, having maintained an honorable level of sportsmanship and courtesy on and off the track, Corey Primm is an outstanding example of hard work, dedication, and talent. And it says, "Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Corey Primm for his athletic achievements, and wishes him continued success in the years to come." And you're still, you're a junior, so you're going to be a senior.
Yeah, I'm going to be a senior, yeah.
So, we get him another year. He will be back here next year too, I'm sure. Congratulations, and did you want to say anything?
I just want to thank people.
I tell you, he looks to me like such a sweet young boy. He gets out there on the track, and this guy's a killer. So, you are just, you are awesome, and I'm really happy to be able to present this to you, and good luck next year, and you've got such a great future ahead of you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks for coming.
Can I like thank my?
Please, come.
I just wanted to thank my coaches at Westlake High School. I mean, it was hard, because a year ago I went to state and I got last, so they, it was kind of good for me, because I realized like what it's worth to get, when you get there, and I just want to thank Joe Snyder, because without him I wouldn't have gotten there, and my family, and my friends at Westlake High School, and Westlake High School.
Thank you. And I know when we went to go get, we wanted to get a copy of the newspaper, someone had gotten and bought them all out. I don't know who that could have been, but here's another one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye. Yeah, fastest in the nation. All right, our next items will be, we can go to our regular time certain, I think we have five minutes unless you want to take a break until our 10 a.m. Okay, let's take a quick break till our 10 a.m. time certain. We'll come back to order then, and our next item on our agenda is our first 10 a.m. time certain, and this is a presentation of the Ventura County Commission on Women's Annual Report, and I believe Diana Goodrow will be presenting that for us. Good morning.
Good morning. Do you want this moved over? Thank you, Supervisor. Good morning, nice to see all of you. Thank you for having us, we really appreciate it. I'd like to introduce our new chair.
Yay!
After three years, it was time for me to move on. Nancy Lee Phillips is going to be the new chair, and we're real excited about it, and we wish her lots, lots, lots. And I'd like to introduce the commission, starting with Cecilia Fargo, Lee Rigan, Elvia Guzere, Mary Pallant, Ina Howard, and Debbie Steele. And Ruth Ann McAllister, who's that behind, though? Thank you so much. We've had a very busy year, and we wish to share just a few of our highlights. Do you know, it's the 25th anniversary of the Ventura County Commission for Women, this Friday, the 14th, and we have made progress to strive for equality and given the depth and breadth of women's issues. We began our year with a working retreat to develop our plan of action for this past year, 2005, 2006, with the donation and time, and very able help of our facilitator, Marisa La Morales, Mary Protam of Port Juaniemi. We began with a review of our mission statement, which is to encourage and support and facilitate the empowerment of Ventura County women and the evaluation of our plan of action. The plan of action for this past year has focused on raising community visibility of the commission and building alliances and collaborations with other organizations. Some of the highlights of our activities included producing our newsletter, which can be found on our webpage, and our continuous update of our webpage. Meeting with, we also met with each of you, which was really wonderful for all of us to inform and be informed about ways to strengthen our relationship as it impacts the commission's efforts for women in this county. On March 8, 2006, the Board of Supervisors issued a proclamation recognizing March as Women's History Month, and an update on commission activities, including the distribution of information about successful women throughout history in all of Ventura County, and we disseminated that to the libraries throughout the county. Also about our collaboration with Santa Barbara and Ventura County Women's Economic Justice Project to present a conference at UCSB for very low, very low-income women from both counties. That was a very successful conference. We also participated in Oxnard's International Women's Day event, whose purpose is to inform women about staying safe and healthy. Throughout the year, we have monitored legislative issues that impact women and their families, and we continue to network with many community organizations. We have kept the public informed about our activities, both through our website, our newsletter, and networking, and press releases. Much of our efforts this year have been in planning the Economic Justice Forum for Women on the effects of the global economy on the local and how it impacts these organizations and their lives. This is a first of a series of conferences dealing with the Beijing Platform for Actions, 12 critical areas of concern. We are working in collaboration with many organizations, many women's groups, and have received a $7,000 grant from the McCune Foundation to help put on this exciting event for leaders of Ventura County and our community. The forum will be held on October 14, 2006, in Simi at the Grand Vista Hotel. As a result of the efforts of this amazing group of women, we are also able to develop a fiscal sponsorship agreement with the Ventura County agreement with the Ventura County Community Foundation. And we have established a Ventura County Commission for Women's Fund with nonprofit status. Yeah. In April, huh? Is that exciting? Yes. In April, we participated in Abuse Across the Lifespan Conference. We continue our membership and close involvement with many organizations. One slide wasn't enough. We needed two to show you the organizations that we, that the commission belongs to. We also involved with the California Commissions for Women's Association and the National Association of Commissions for Women, as well as our association with the Women's Intercultural Network and the California Women's Agenda. In June, it was our pleasure again to present to you the women from the Cal Works Program and to honor their struggle and their success. It was a very special day. We continue to work towards SEDAR being ratified by our government. So far, 183 countries have ratified the treaties. Countries that have not ratified include the United States, Monaco, Iran, Somalia, Sudan, and a very few island nations. All of Latin America and the Caribbean have ratified. The countries that have signed have consented to promote and protect the equal rights of women. In our state, cities and counties have adopted ordinances to implement SEDAR. We appreciate the fact that in 2000, this board urged our government to ratify the treaty. We hope that we can continue building on these efforts and to strengthen them by formulating policies to eliminate gender disparity in areas that include issues of economic development, education, violence against women, women's health care and housing, and to ensure that the county does not discriminate against women in the allocation of funding and the delivery of services. We have implemented and submitted for funding our teen pregnancy prevention project, and will share this with you today. Studies have shown us that the program that has been funded by the county until 2003 was very successful. Since 2004, there have been considerable increases in the number of sibling teen pregnancies. The county program serviced approximately 126 siblings per year, in the six years, during which there were only six teen pregnancies in the service sibling group, 2% over the life of the program. The ramifications of the program cut across, ramifications of the program cut are more severe than was predicted. From the data, from the date of closure through January 2005, 10 of the teen sisters former Ventura County Adolescent Sibling Prevention Program, known as ASPPP, became pregnant and now are in the Family Life Program, the Teen Parenting Program. As of June 2006, the number is much higher. ALFP caseworkers verbally report 40 sibling pregnancies, 37% of their caseloads. This increase in teen pregnancy has a severe financial impact on this county. We hope that we are successful in receiving funds to reinstate this important project and have provided a copy of the proposal for you today. We anticipate receiving funding to support the project and will return at a later date to request reconsideration for clerical support to help oversight the funds. The commission has been without a budget since 1997. We have received tremendous in-kind support and moral support from the Human Services Agency, especially Ted Meyers and Lori Flack. And we greatly appreciate all that they have done for us and you have done for us. We conducted our first meeting in our new office, our July 1st meeting. And finally, we have place to sit, filing cabinets, a table and chairs, and a desk for our phone and answer machine. Thank you for that. We really, really appreciate it. I want to close by thanking you very much for your time today and your continued support of the commission. Questions and comments are greatly appreciated.
Supervisor Bennett?
I would just like to thank you for your great leadership of the commission over these last three years. And you have big shoes to fill. And it's nice to know that you have a talented person following you, but you've done a great job, Diana.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Really appreciate that.
Very, very much. Okay.
Supervisor Long, did you want to comment?
Just thank you for the report. One, it was very thorough in really highlighting the behind-the-scenes work that the commission has been doing in this past year, but certainly for years. It's, I've always been a strong supporter, will continue to be so, and encourage you all to continue the good work. I'm very pleased that we were able to give you at least a place to call home, to give you a base to work from. And I know now with the nonprofit status, you'll be able to go after additional grants and really focus on the good work that you've done. And over the years, 25 years, I look at Bonnie.
Look at Bonnie.
25 years. That's remarkable. And I know lots of good work over those 25 years in bringing both the consciousness to the community of the, of the challenges that women face and also in stepping into leverage with county government, resources and supporters and volunteers to work with us on the programs that we have in place for women and family in our communities. So you're so appreciated.
Thank you very much.
And too, I wanted to thank you for your chairship and also the women for your perseverance. I also appreciate you bringing to light to us and to our attention the issue about teen sibling pregnancy. And we're seeing, it sounds like the results of not having that funded, not having that program moving forward. So I think that is definitely something we need to prioritize. And I thank you for taking that on. I know Supervisor Michaels has a special presentation too.
Yes, thank you. And speaking of Bonnie, longtime citizen of Simi Valley and busy, 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 busy lady. And she's been on the commission for a long time. And today I would like to present her with a resolution thanking her and honoring her for her dedicated service to the Ventura County Commission for Women. And I'd like to read it and then I'll come down and present it to Bonnie. Excuse me, and thank her, I think I'm your second or third supervisor that you have served under. Whereas Bonnie Warrington has served on the Ventura County Commission for Women with great distinction for more than 25 years, leaving a legacy marked with great compassion and professionalism, qualities that have been integral to her successfully serving the citizens of Ventura County. Whereas Bonnie's tenure on the commission began in 1981, when she was hired as an administrative assistant and was subsequently appointed by the Board of Supervisors to continue her work with the commission and ensure the organization's longevity during a period of budget cuts. And I believe that was Vicky Howard that appointed you? And it was a good thing because I had a ready-made appointment and she's been marvelous. Whereas, her outstanding dedication to the women and the youth of our community has been recognized by several community organizations honoring her with Woman of the Year and by the Ventura County Professional Women's Network as Networker of the Year for her outstanding commitment to women's and youth's issues. And whereas, she was also honored by Seroptimist International of the Americas for her work in human rights and the, and status of women, and named as one of 2006 Remarkable Women by Ventura National, excuse me, Ventura National Political Committee. Whereas, in addition to her service to CCW, Bonnie has served as a part-time employee for Cano Youth Employment Services, monitored residential care facilities for the Long-Term Care Ombudsman Service, worked as a senior housing assistant for Ventura County's Housing Authority, and was legislative chair for the Camino Real Region for the past 14 years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors honors Bonnie for her continued devotion to Ventura County residents and especially her commitment to women and children. And we wish you continued success and much happiness in the future. Signed this day. I'll bring this day.
Hey Bonnie. We want to present this to you as a very, very small token of our thanks for all you've given to all of us and will continue to give to all of us because we're not letting you leave. We need your wisdom and we need your support. Thank you very much, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Sure, it does want some regard, doesn't it? It certainly does, doesn't it? Thank you so much for all that you've done all these years. And you've been a good friend.
Can I?
You certainly have. But I'm going to try to, Bonnie.
Turn the red light on when it's time. I cannot begin to tell you, members of the Board of Supervisors, how grateful I have been over the last 25 years to have been a part of this great organization. And I thank you for this resolution. And I'll continue to work toward helping women in my area in Santa Clarita where I'm going to be living. Is quite an active Seroptimist International. And I am also a region officer that deals with legislative advocacy for women and children. And I'll continue to do my work. And again, thanks to all of you for this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Very well-deserved resolution. I know Supervisor Flynn wanted to make a comment.
Before you leave, Bonnie, hi Bonnie. I've known you all these years. I really want to thank you. You know, when I come close to you, I feel a transfer of energy. You're so energy, energetic. I just appreciate that. And thanks to all of you, especially for the program on Cal Works. That is so important to help people make their way in that program and make their way into, into society with a full line of work, with a nice home. And that's our goal. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Secretary.
I might quickly, I thank you too, Bonnie. You've been a dear friend. And '89, I was appointed to the commission and you were a great mentor for the three years I served on it and really are the person that has continued with my great love for the work of the commission. And I thank you and wish you well. It's so good to see you.
Thank you very much. I didn't know you were a commissioner. How about that? Thank you. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you everyone for coming. Really appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
All right. And good luck in your move. Our next item on our...
Move to receive and file the report.
Motion to receive and file the report. We have a motion, a second, and seeing no objection, that passes. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Our next item on our agenda is our item, going back to our regular agenda item, would be through our county executive office. And this is item 41, which is regarding per diem compensation and mileage for members of the Ventura County Grand Jury.
And Frank Chow will do the presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chow.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Mr. Johnston. While it's hard to follow all these outstanding people, but I'm Frank Chow for the record and an ordinary county employee with the CEO's office.
None of our employees are ordinary. They're extraordinary.
Thank you. The item you have before you now is a proposed ordinance that pertains to setting the compensation and the mileage for grand jury, okay, for grand jury members. The proposed ordinance essentially has two changes. One is that it will increase the per diem rate for, for grand jury members from $20 a day to 25. And the second one is a minor, some minor language changes that better clarifies that individual grand jury members cannot make individual, conduct their own individual investigations. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
It sounds like a good change. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion on this?
One's a second.
We have a motion and a second, and I see no objections, so that does pass. And then our next item is another...
Title of the ordinance.
Oh, please read.
An ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Ventura State of California repealing and enacting provisions fixing the per diem compensation and mileage for members of the Ventura County Grand Jury.
Thank you. And that motion also passes unanimously. Our next item on our agenda then, thank you, Mr. Chow, is item 42. And this also is the county executive office.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Since we have a 10:30, three 10:30s coming up, and this one may take a little time, could we either take a break or move to item 43 or other items and come back at 10? We've got five minutes to 10, four minutes to 10:30.
That certainly works for me. Do we have our district attorney staffer, item 43 here? Then let's move on to 43 and we'll come back to 42 after our next time cert. 43 is our regarding grant programs. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Parks, Board Members, Mr. Johnston, Mel Chambers with the DA's office. This item before you is a reoccurring grant that we apply for since 1994. And it's a spousal abuser program grant. Helps fund an attorney in that program. Will receive about $95,000 from the state through the Attorney General's Office. I could answer any questions you might have about the application at this point.
We have a motion, a second, and a thank you. And seeing no objection, that passes.
Great, thank you.
That was quick. Can we also move on then also and do item 44, which is Supervisor Long's appointment?
Yes, thank you. Recommendation to appoint Jerry Reed to the Ventura County Harbor Commission. The letter pretty much gives his background. He has great interest and will bring, I think, good perspective and experience to the appointment. And that is my motion.
Motion and a second on that. And seeing no objections, that passes. And congratulations to Jerry Reed. Our next item is item 45, which is a request by myself to reappoint members to the Childcare Planning Council of Ventura County.
Move the recommendation.
Thank you. Motion and a second. And seeing no objections, that also passes. With that then I think item 46, are we, Mr. Coons or Mr. Pratt, would you like to take item 46 regarding the grants of temporary easement?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Good morning, Board Member, Board Members, Chair Parks, Mr. Johnston, for the record. My name's Jeff Pratt. I'm with the Watershed Protection District. The purpose of today's request to your board is to seek your approval of three items necessary to achieve the cleanout of the Lower Kiagus Creek. It would be the sale of material that's going to be generated by the cleanout, easement agreements for the temporary storage of materials, and the award of the contract for the purpose of the cleanout. And before I start, just three short housekeeping items. One, we're moving pretty fast to trying to achieve this cleanout before the rainy season. So we've overlooked one item. That is that this item should have included supervisory district number two as well as three. It overlaps. And then two items require some updates as a result of changes between the board letter circulation and today's meeting. Those are that we open bids on Wednesday. I've got copies of those bid abstracts for your board. And as a result, we have a low responsive responsible bidder that we'll be recommending in a moment. And the last is that a sensitive area was discovered at one of the storage sites last week, which required that we move the storage site to an area that's planted in tomatoes. We're going to need the six additional acres. That's another $12,000 per year for storage. And we provided that information to your board earlier this morning. And I think Mr. Johnston mentioned it in, in his presentation. A little bit of background, January, February, storms of '05 with the Simi fires of '03 generated a lot of sediment. It all ended up in the Lower Kiagus. It reduced channel capacity to something anomaly eight-year with freeboard. But a 20-year storm will overflow the levees in that area. The amount of material deposited was deposited from Highway 1 all the way to above the Oneimi Road Bridge. That's historically never occurred before. And it was initially estimated to be about 800,000 yards. Your board approved an emergency contract for a removal of up to 180,000 cubic yards above Oneimi Road Bridge in '05, just after the storms. That was bid at $17.50 per cubic yard, rather high number. At the time, we only had permission from the regulatory agencies to remove 50,000 yards, even though it was an emergency circumstance. We removed that 50,000. It began... We removed that 50,000. It began to rain. There was no work to be done. So we had your board cancel that contract. We rebid the balance of that contract earlier this year. That was 130,000 yards. The price we got for that was 8.50 per cubic yard, and that was to just haul the material someplace else. That work is currently underway. And we're now before you to bid the remainder. And we have an update on that number because we had a survey performed on 5/31. We got the results of that survey in last week. We now estimate that there is 580,000 yards of material remaining. That has been bid. The lowest responsive responsible bidder bid 562 per cubic yard. Now, today's presentation is a cluster of three interrelated issues that normally we would have presented to you one at a time. But because they're interdependent, you're getting them all at once. And that makes the board letter a little more complicated. The sale of material is in an attachment to your board letter. It is to Hurside LLC. They plan to use that on a site in Port Weneme to raise that site so they can build homes there. The salient points of that deal and the attachment are that Hurside will pay $4 a cubic yard for the material they use, and they will pay $25,000 to offset storage costs. Hurside will also transport that material from the place we stockpile it, next to the creek, at their own expense. If Hurside fails to consummate this deal for some reason, they will be responsible for the additional rent, and they will provide us an offset in the cost. If we can't sell it for $4 a cubic yard, they'll cover any losses that we have. The next item in the packet are two easements that will be required for the material storage. Those easements are with Rogers Family Trust and the Hanson Group, I guess we would call it. Exhibit B to land easements contain the terms of the agreement we have with those property owners. Salient points of those terms are that we pay each of them $2,000 per month, per acre, or, excuse me, per year, per acre for storing the material, and we give them 50% of the proceeds of the sale of the material. Again, we found a sensitive area on one of the properties. We moved that, the storage site, from that sensitive area to an area that's now planted in tomatoes. They will have to remove those tomatoes. It required an additional six acres of storage, and that means $12,000 more per year. The last item is the award of the contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder. You have the bid tabs in front of you. We opened those last Wednesday afternoon. The project was bid with two schedules because we thought there was more material at the time. One schedule was to pile the material right next to the excavation area. The other schedule was to haul it away to some site undesignated. We now think that all the material will fit in the stockpile and that Hurside will be able to use all the material, so there won't be any hauling away. The low bid that you see is from Alliance Contracting, and we are recommending that you go with that bid. The total bid would be 3.9 million, and approximately, we expect at least $1 million of that to be offset by the sale of the material. Staff recommends your board's approval or requests your board's approval of the recommendations set forth in the letter. And we're here to answer any questions. I'm accompanied by Keith Ilgar, Real Estate Services, who worked on the deal, and I believe Tom Legere, our Head of Operations and Maintenance, both of whom made this deal possible.
Are there any questions? I see a motion and a second. Hearing no objections, that passes. I would just like to comment as I start to understand a little bit more about Watershed Protection District. And a lot of what the work that you do is removing debris from detention basins, debris basins. And this is an ongoing, ongoing work because we constantly have sediment erosion and going in and continually removing. I know there's some studies out there and looking at ways to perhaps plan these things better, build these things differently, so that you don't have to do this kind of work. Whether that's, you know, allowing for it to, you know, the sediment to flow through and go all the way to the ocean, or other ways of approaching these things. But I will be looking into that, you know, because I'm interested in it and also because we might have a more environmental way of going about these things. But it does seem to be a large part of what you have to do for flood control is to continually always removing this, and every time it rains, you've got to go do it again. So it'd be nice to find a better way, I think. I don't know if you've looked into that, if you've participated on some studies on that.
Oh, absolutely. The Cayges Creek Watershed Management Plan, in fact, we provide the foundation for a lot of the work that's going on. And we will be trotting out a straw man proposal, which is, as your board knows, the first watershed-wide look at trying to address all the issues at once. And the straw man proposal is going to all the stakeholders, as a matter of fact, tomorrow. And we hope to get the feedback we need to make the projects more environmentally sensitive and less maintenance-intensive, and still provide the level of protection that everyone expects.
Yeah, and in the long run, I'm sure it would save, you know, millions of dollars because this is such a huge project that has to be ongoing. Thank you for responding on that one.
Thank you.
Yes. And then...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, since we only have one item left, I think Laura Hernandez would really appreciate it if we did it. And it's usually a real fast item, right, Laura? Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was thinking that would be nice to get through this so staff can get back. So Item 47 is regarding Homeland Security.
Thank you for taking me out of order here. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of board, Mr. Johnston. I'm Laura Hernandez, Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. And this morning, we're asking your board's approval to ratify the submittal of a Homeland Security application for the year 2006 and to authorize an attached resolution, which was attached to your board letter yesterday, authorizing the sheriff, the undersheriff, and myself to sign Homeland Security application documents on behalf of the county. We are applying for approximately $1.4 million in Homeland Security funding under the State Homeland Security Program and the Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Program. This money will be distributed to the first responder agencies, emergency management programs throughout the county. We are on a fast track, of course, to get this application submitted. We submitted it prior to June 30th with the approval of the CEO. We're hoping to hear back soon, so we will then come back to your board for approval to accept these funds. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. We have a motion and a second, and seeing no objection, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like now to move on to our 10:30 items.
Move to Item 48.
Okay, I do have a comment regarding 48.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll be glad to make it now and try to be brief. But I just did note that one of the items that we do have on our consent calendar, I believe, is regarding some actions in Santa Cruz that they have taken. And they have provided us some substantial information regarding an effort that they have done in Santa Cruz to have a moratorium prohibiting the planting of genetically engineered crops in Santa Cruz County. They formed a commission through their public health agency to study this item and have provided us a lot of the information that they used and how they formed their commission, as well as the studies they've done. And that Board of Supervisors feels that the evidence is pretty clear that their actions are well justified. So I would just encourage our board to take a look at that one. I'm interested in that, certainly. And with that, then, we have a motion and a second on Item 48. And seeing no objections, then that does pass. And now we'll move on to items on our 10:30 item, which is our first is 33, and Mr. Pakala.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston. Reddy Pakala with the Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. This morning, I'll be presenting Items 33 and 34, both of which are for Ventura County Waterwork District Number One. District provides water and sanitation services to the city of Moore Park and areas to the north and west of the city. District imports water from State Water Project through Cayges, Mansfield Water District, and also pumps water from local groundwater that District owns. Effective January 1st, 2006, Cayges has increased their water rate to the District by 5.2%. In addition, our electrical energy costs have also gone up. Therefore, we are recommending a 4.2% water commodity rate increase for District One water customers and a 6.7% increase for agriculture customers within the District. Previous water rate increase was in April 2005, when Cayges increased their water rates last year. We recommended the increase, and your board approved our recommendation last year. This year, should your board approve the proposed water rate increase, it will mean an average increase of $1.08 per residence per month. We mailed notices of the proposed water rate increase to all water customers within the District. The District Advisory Committee unanimously concurred with the proposed recommendation. And as of this morning at 9 o'clock, we have received one call from a customer. She told us that she would not be able to attend this meeting. However, she would like to send some comments. We have not received any as we speak, as I report this morning to you. We are recommending that your board approve the recommended water rate increases in the staff report. This concludes my verbal presentation. We'll be glad to respond to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm glad to say that this is a public hearing, and I have opened the public hearing. And now, so you don't have the comments from the individual who called? I would guess that person is opposed to the increase?
That person did not tell us what the comments are. She said she would not be able to attend the meeting. She would be sending the comments. But we have not received them.
Okay, so we don't have that available before the vote. Thank you. Do we have a comments motion? We have a motion and a second. And seeing no objections, then that does pass. And now I'll open the public hearing on our next 10:30 item, which is Item 35. And that is, I'm sorry, 34, which is also regarding sewer rate adjustment.
Yeah, this item is for, again, Ventura County Waterwork District Number One sewer rate increase. To offset the increased costs in electrical energy costs and biosol disposal costs, we are recommending an increase of $3 per month per residence within the District One service area. The average sewer rates within Ventura County are about $30 per month per residence. The current District One sewer rate is $19 per month. If you were to approve the staff recommendation, it'll go to $22 per month per residence within District One service area. The previous sewer rate increase was in June 2004. We, again, mailed notices to all of our sewer customers. We have not received any comments or questions from our sewer customers. District's Citizens Advisory Committee unanimously concurs with the staff recommendation. And we are recommending that your board approve the recommended sewer rate increases shown in our staff report. This concludes my verbal presentation. We'll be glad to respond to any questions you might have. Thank you.
I would like to just ask one question. How is it that you are able to do such a fine job in keeping the rates lower than the rest of Ventura County average?
This is natural genius and talent.[1354.21][1354.21](laughter)
Natural genius and talent, I think.
Well, District One sanitation plant, it used to be a very small treatment plant. As we are, as you know, District One is a newer system. We have new growth coming in. All of the improvement costs are paid for by the developers, and we don't have any other costs attached to the sewer service charges other than just operation-maintenance costs. And of course, when we construct the treatment plants, we are very careful about what type of treatment processes should be selected so that we are looking at the lifecycle costs on a long-term basis for the sewer customers. And I would say choosing the appropriate sewer treatment processes and also making sure that we are doing a good job of keeping track of all the costs and anticipating the future costs. We are recommending a $3 rate increase. Actually, that's one of the larger rate increases I am recommending to your board since I have been there for 18 years. So...
Reddy might be a little modest, but one thing I'd like to advise the board is on the rates. When I was in Simi Valley, I looked to hire the best people I could find and pay them the best salaries I could to get those best people. We had the lowest rates in the tri-counties area. We had the Plant of the Year Award for the State of California. And we had the lowest rates in the tri-county. Coming here to the county, I've done the best I can to hire the best people I can find. Reddy is outstanding in his job, and he has hired the best people we can find. And that's a large part of why the rates are so low. And I want to compliment Reddy and his staff.
Certainly, that we are raising it certainly, but to 22, when the rest of the county's average is 30, that is outstanding, and it is a reflection of a good staff and good pre-planning so your operation and maintenance are, and it's expensive. Thank you. Do we have a motion? And a second. And seeing no objections, then that passes.
Thank you.
Now, our next item is Item 35, and Ms. Robinson is going to be doing this one.
Yes, Item 35 is a request for adoption of a new fee, resolution and fees for building and safety. It reflects basically your board's action during the budget session of adding enforcement officers. The new fees would go into effect September 9th. Overall, it increases the fees from a 7.5% increase to a 9.75% increase by adding to the enforcement program. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. We have a motion?
This means no more backlogs at all.
Thank you. It's always good to be able to, I feel, to be able to fund code enforcement. It's very needed, and we do have a good backlog. So good luck, and thank you. We have a motion and a second. And seeing no objections, then that passes also. All right. And now I think we are able to go back to our regular agenda. We have one item that's left, and that's Item 42. And this is the CEO's office. And this is a review and discussion of the grand jury report on Channel Islands Harbor. And this is Mr. Johnson.
To board's request, we've put this item on. I've reviewed the report, and Items 1 through 5 are basically procedural things which we concur with the grand jury. I believe four of the five things are done. And the fifth one, we are in the process of complying with, which is to expand the website information available to the public. So we present it to your board for whatever further direction you wish to give the staff, if any.
Thank you. Do board members have comments? As I understand, I know Mr. Flynn has a PowerPoint that you want to do on this, too. Would you like to go ahead with that, then?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, I just returned from Mexico, and I was down there for a little over a week. And at one time, the telephone operator at the hotel where I stayed said to me, "You've had a call." And she said, I always said, "What's his name?" Johnny Johnston called me. And I said, "Well, what does he want?" And she said, "He said something about a character reference." And I said, "I hope you'll call him back and tell him I'm not going to apply for political asylum in Mexico." Anyway, I have a slide presentation which I'd like to show. And Elizabeth, have you handed out these? I have some backup material, which Elizabeth will give each one of you a packet of. I will show, my slides will be based on what's in the public record. And the backup material that you have is documentation for everything that I'm going to say. And if I may refer to it after the slide program. If you can go... Okay, thank you. The lease acquisition by Oxnard Marinas LP. Oxnard Marinas LP acquired six leased parcels, 447 slips total, from Channel Islands Harbor Investment Company for $3 million payment to Channel Islands Harbor Investment Company. If you, you know, were to do a little arithmetic on that, it would be a little over 6,000 a slip. $6,000, which you can draw your own conclusions. Next, please. Lease acquisition by Oxnard Marinas LP. The future income for the lessee from the leased parcels would be $29.5 million. That's over the life of the lease. The Board of Supervisors approved the lease transfer on July 26, 2005. And at that point, as you recall, County Council, I think, told us that you really don't have much room to make any changes. So that transfer was realized. And then on September 13th, not too far distance ahead in time, 2005 meeting of the Board of Supervisors, in response to a request for more time, the harbor director said that the board must approve the lease amendments immediately, claiming that the amendments were essential for completing the lease transfer. I think at this time, one of the board members asked for more time to... I think at this time, one of the board members asked for more time to look at the issues, and in fact, didn't really have the material until that morning. Next, lease amendments. Channel Islands Harbor letter dated September 13, 2005. The lease amendments provided valuable concessions for the lessie at no cost to the lessie. Summary of lease amendments. Uniform lease termination dates, some extended, some shortened, reason given, so that the lessie could borrow money more easily. Now, if you look at the slips, the number, total number of slips, bringing them together, you will see that the number of slips that were below 21 years were the great bulk of the slips. The number of slips beyond the 21 years were a minor part of the slips. And I have, I have documentation, which I'll go into after this. Let me have the back, please. This resulted in a net extension of leases at no charge to the lessie, although county's stated practice is to charge for such concessions. Next. Letter to Westbrook Partners LLC from Harbor's Legal Counsel at that time, May 2000. The county's practice, and as you recall, Westbrook Partners would be the Channel Islands Development Investment Corporation, they have kind of three names, and it's hard to remember all of them. They first came in here as Tiger, then Westbrook, and so forth. The county's practice regarding lease extensions is to charge a fee equal to the value of such extensions, as well as to amend the extended leases to better meet county rent policies and operational guidelines. Now, that's an important point to make and to understand, and later, I will go into the documentation and give a much clearer picture of what is meant by the county's practice regarding lease extensions is to charge a fee equal to the value of such extensions. Next, please. Summary of new lease amendments. Number one, be rather, percentage rent to county is 20%, although other lessies were made to pay 25%. And 25% was the issue with, one of the issues with Channel Islands Marina, with Farrell, 25%. And it's been an issue with the leases, and all the leases, with exception of this one, the latest one, paid 25% of gross. This one pays 20%. So you have to ask your question, the question, "Well, why is this happening?" Next. Now, if you look at the 20% versus a 25% lease rates, the names of the leases are on the left side, Bahia Cabrillo, Lobster Trap, Casa Serena, Villa Serena, Villa Serena Two, Villa Serena Three. Those are all the marinas that were transferred, as you recall. The number of slips in the next column, and what 20% rental computation would equal for each one of those. For example, Bahia Cabrillo, it would be $1,044,000, I'm sorry. And then, if, and then you go down the line, you see all the 20%. So that would be the computation for each one. Then you get to the bottom, and the total there is 6.2 million rounded. And then the 25% rental computation, the one that other marinas have, and the one that the county has made a practice of and has supported, you'll see Bahia Cabrillo with 1.6 million. So you see the difference there. And then, if you look at the last column, taxpayer losses, in other words, if the 25% were part of the lease rather than a 20%, part of the amendment, I'm sorry, then you'll see the losses, taxpayer losses, 613,890. And then go down that column, taxpayer losses, you get down to a 2.6 million is the difference between the 20% and the 25%. And therefore, that was a pretty favorable treatment to that lessie. That's when I use the word, I think, sweetheart deal. If you can go to the next slide, please. Summary of taxpayer losses. Oxnard Marina's LP have received lease extensions worth 4 million, 4.9 million, at no charge, at no charge. Final lease income with extensions boosted up the total amount of earnings to 34.4 million dollars. The original lease income was 29.4 million. In other words, the lease, when it was transferred from Channel Islands Investment Company, Harbor Investment Company, the total from that would be 29.4. But with the amendments, it goes up to 34.4. Lease rent remained at 20% versus 25% for others, and that, as we've gone through, was a loss to the taxpayers of 2.6 million, okay? Cost to the taxpayers of lost revenue continued. Now, you know, we use that term bonus fee in one of the leases, not this lease, but one of the other leases, Channel Islands Marina, we use the word bonus fee. We use the word, or two words, upfront, three words, income. Even if an 10% upfront bonus payment, using the word bonus synonymous with the other two, they're upfront, and upfront bonus payment for the net lease extensions would have resulted in 494,000, 494,320 in revenue for the taxpayers. Estimated taxpayer loss, because there was no bonus required. And I want to make sure I emphasize, once the lease was transferred and the amendment process starts, the amendment process is between the county harbor department and the lessie, or potential, or the lessie in this case. So there's the estimated loss. Next, please. I have a set of recommendations, but before we go through those, if we could just look very quickly at some of the documentation I've placed in front of you. Documentation is more important, really, than what we have up there. If you look at the letter, May 2nd, 2000, the letter is here for all of you to look at. Steve, do you have a copy of the letter? You want to refer to it? I'm not getting any response there. If you look at the letter, this is from the attorney firm who represented the harbor department, in a letter to Scott Fitzgerald. It says in the second paragraph, "The county's practice regarding lease extensions is to charge a fee equal to the value of such extensions, as well as to amend the extended lease to better meet current county rent policies and operational guidelines." Now, that is a letter dated May 2nd from King, Weiser, Bazar, and Jacobs Law Firm, who represented the county harbor department at that time. Now, if you go to a, an email or a memo from Lynn Krieger, it looks like this. Wait, you see this, Steve? I'm not sure I got your attention here. If you look at the third paragraph, it says, from, this is from Lynn Krieger, she's writing in response to Supervisor Bennett's request for analysis of the letter submitted by Tom Hogan on behalf of Pacific Marina Development. And then, if you look at the third paragraph, "The next issue relates to the upfront lease fee or bonus payment." Mr. Hogan is correct that the offer from, and then it goes into the different, or kind of the dispute there between two potential lessies. The bonus payment, notice the word bonus payment is used. In other words, if you're going to extend the lease, as the leases were extended for Oxnard Marina's LP, you're going to have to pay a fee. I want to emphasize, a fee was not charged to Oxnard Marina's LP. So this is another piece of very important documentation right here, and this is a letter, an email for Lynn Krieger. And I want to make sure the record has all of my presentation, including the documentation. If you look at another document dated September 13, 2005, and the subject of it is approval of lease amendment number one, and look on the second page, and look in the, about in the middle of the paragraph that's titled Discussion, a little bit below the middle, it says, "The lessie has agreed to reduce the term on some of the parcels and increase it on others so that the lender can be satisfied as to the length of term without the county granting term extensions without requiring investment." Now, if you look at the, the part below that, which gets into the specifics, it says, "The term of parcel C, Bahia Cabrillo Waterside, is extended for 6.5 years, with a new expiration date of December 31, 2026." And then you look at the term of parcel F, Lobster Trap Waterside, is extended for approximately nine years, with a new expiration date of December 31, 2026. The term of F1, Casa Serena Hotel Waterside, is extended for approximately 11.5 years, with a new expiration date of December 31, 2006. The terms of parcel LM1, LM2, LM3 have all been reduced with a new expiration date of December 31, 2026. The interesting part here is that there are no number of years that have to be reduced. They're not here. And yet, the extended years are there, 6.5 years, nine years, and 11.5. I made this point earlier, that the number of slips that were extended were greater than the number of slips that were reduced in years. The number of slips reduced in years was really a minor number. And notice there is no, there is no indication of how many years were reduced. That was left out. Now, you go back to the paragraph in the middle of the paragraph under Discussion, "The lessie has agreed," it almost sounds like, you know, he really did something here. He has agreed, or the firm has agreed, to reduce the term. He really had to do something. Now, that is kind of an editorial, but I think it's an act, pretty accurate comment to make, in that it's misleading. The other thing that's misleading is the lack of the number of years that were reduced. And I'll repeat that point. They, they were a smaller number than the number of years, the number of slips, the number of parcels that were extended. And so that's, that to me is a major point. If you look at Channel Islands Harbor to John Farrell from Lynn Krieger dated August 28, 2002, you'll see the number in the second full paragraph, near the bottom, three quarters the way down, "Our proposed new rent is 25%. So in effect, you are receiving a rent reduction." The reason I put that in there, it goes, it hits the 25%. And as I remember Lynn talking with me about the discussions early on with the Farrell family, that 25% was an issue. Last, I simply present this Stan Harper and Associates letter dated November 11, 2005. Let me just read a little of it. "It is my understanding that there was no competition in the bidding process. It was just given to Almar." Now, the county council would say, "Well, that's something we had no control over, because it was a transfer." Now, if I were able to present evidence that, as I understand, what, before the grand jury, then I would have a lot more to say about that, but I'm not going to say it here. "This does not seem to be in the best interest of the taxpayers of Winter County or any other county." Now, you can say, "Well, anyone who hasn't been considered will have a complaint." But I think people ought to be considered. If they're interested in taking on a task like running a marina, or in this case, running several marinas, then they should be given that opportunity. Madam Chair, I appreciate, and board members, you listening to this presentation. I do think that you need to examine this very carefully. I hope that if you have questions about it, that you will call me or bring the questions up later in the meeting or next week, because this is a very important presentation to you. The issue is not John Flynn, nor Lynn Krieger, nor the grand jury, nor Johnny Johnston, nor County Council, nor you. The issue is, what is the document, what do the facts say? And the facts, to me, say that the taxpayer did not receive, from this, from this negotiation, did not receive what the taxpayer should have received. And that's the main point of my presentation. Thank you very much.
Could I just ask a question? You indicate that there was no remuneration for the extension of the lease. Clearly, there were some things that the county got out of it. And just for the point of openness, would you care to tell us what the county received for lease extensions?
The county? I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
The county did not receive anything, really. The county did not receive rebuilding the slips, or none of that was in the lease. Now, perhaps it came up later, but it was not in the lease. It's got to be in the lease. It can't just come up later, "Oh, by the way..."
Okay, I was just specific to the amendments. You don't have the information before you to see what the county did get for the amendments?
I'm just telling you, the county got nothing of substance.
Nothing of substance. Yeah, so we'll go ahead. Supervisor Long?
I have just one question, because, again, the item before us is not, not going over this information that Mr. Flynn has just now presented to us. I guess my question to you, is this the same information that was given to the district attorney and the grand jury?
This is public information.
Was this given to the district attorney and the grand jury?
I'm not going to answer that, because I'm saying to you that it is public, it is information for the public.
Well, and I think it's unfortunate that you bring this information forward, and this is not the agenda item, and you're again calling to task our CEO, our director of the harbor department, the staff of the harbor department, our legal counsel on documents that you are saying, in fact, documents you voted on, in some cases, on issues that are in these documents. And you're saying that there's still this malfeasance or mismanagement, when we have a grand jury and a district attorney who's reviewed all the information that you said you sent to them, that says that is not the case. So I, I don't, I don't believe that this is the time for the board to get into a discussion again on this presentation, you know, however the board wishes to handle that. I don't have a comment on that part of it.
I appreciate, I appreciate your concern and your questions. I have to tell you that I did not notice these things right off the bat, but I had several people come to my office, people who follow that harbor and the negotiations and the issues at that harbor, and they're not necessarily from the beach. They're from other places, one even from Thousand Oaks. And they're the ones that started to open this up to me and say, "Mr.," I'm trying to answer her question.
I would just say, just because we've got, we have several comments coming, but it's not really you responding to everybody's comments necessarily, but otherwise, this could go on for a while. So I would just ask Supervisor Long if she can continue her comments, and then we can go on to others.
Well, I wanted to get back to the item before us, and that was at a request, and that we have the grand jury report before us, because I feel it clearly calls on the board to, to have input to the CEO in order to compile the responses that are required by, for all grand jury reports. And as the CEO brought this forward, and he's already commented on, the recommendations from the grand jury that go from R01 through R05 is being basically processed and procedure and many things that are already in place. I think the two that are important to this board for discussion are R06 and R07, because I think it really speaks to the operations of, of the board and, and perhaps a board direction to the CEO on how to reply to those comments. So I, I would like to start with R07, which is the one that I think is the strongest comment from the grand jury that really does speak to allegations or accusations made by public officials, and I will speak just to public officials speaking to this board, not to department heads, county employees, that if, if in fact, there are statements to be made that, that impugn either malfeasance or mismanagement, that there surely should be, just as a responsible elected official, should be documentation to the same that provides specific factual documentation at the time the allegations and malfeasance are, are made on a public dius. We all know that we have legislative immunity, but I don't believe that that relieves us of having a responsibility to the public and the taxpayers if we're going to make accusations that then take staff time and taxpayer dollars to do extensive investigation and compiling of information to respond to such accusations. And, and I, I have, you know, some thoughts on, on what I would like to recommend we send forward to the grand jury in response to R07, but I'd like to certainly open for any further discussion.
What I'd like to do is just get everyone to comment once, and then we can go back.
That I would like to follow.
Yeah, I, we would definitely hear from you again. Would you like to go next, Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, I think it's, first of all, I, I know Mr. Johnson, I don't know whether you have a specific thing you were wanting to try to say in response to that before I make my comments. Is there?
At any time, away, whatever you feel.
The, I'll tell you this, I think this, this comes down to a pretty simple issue today, after reading the grand jury report. I think everybody virtually that I've talked to, supporters on both sides and everything else, I think they all agree on one thing. If we're going to sit up here at the dius and accuse somebody of being corrupt, or a thief, or doing something wrong, we have a responsibility to provide the evidence at the same time. It's just inherently unfair for anybody to be accused, particularly by somebody at this, at this level, to be accused of, of some kind of wrongdoing and not, and to be more than a year later, finding out, you know, what the, what the, some of the evidence is that supposedly is out there. And that's so inherently unfair. There is freedom of speech in this country, and we do have a responsibility to check and make sure taxpayers are not being taken advantage of, et cetera. But freedom of speech comes with responsibilities, and, and the responsibility is to provide the evidence. And if you, if for some reason you think the evidence is so sensitive that it can't go public, then you should make your allegation private also. Just inherently, I think, the bottom line with this. So that's really where I am. I'd like to point out just very quickly, on the grand jury's report, with regards to all of this information that we have here today, I can't imagine that if there was any compelling evidence that it wasn't presented to the district attorney and the grand jury, it would actually be inappropriate to have not have presented it. So when, kind of a weird answer to the question, was this presented to the grand jury or not? But the grand jury says in its second paragraph, "The grand jury found no evidence supporting the allegations against the harbor department or its director." Repeat it again, "These interviews produced no statements supporting documents or any other evidence of," oh, they put this power point up there for me. "These interviews produce no statements supporting documents or any other evidence of any form of corruption, favoritism, or malfeasance." That's direct from the grand jury report after months of having all of this in front of them. I don't know that you can say anymore. I mean, we were told we couldn't have the evidence because we were biased. I don't think you accused the district attorney or the grand jury of being biased. This is what they, what they found out there. Even the statement was made here that the district attorney, during the interview, the district attorney investigation stated that statements attributed by various private citizens were not factual. In other words, a citizen said, what people have said I said was, was not factual. The final thing I would just put out, which is sort of, I think, an, an overall comment that I would like to make, the simple issue being, we shouldn't, and that's why I support Supervisor Long's comments about that, is that, is the final statement of the grand jury there, or I'm sorry, statement of the grand jury, which was, "Since 1998," and I'm sorry, you can't read that very well, "But since 1998, the harbor department, its director, most members of the board of supervisors, and the county staff," I'm going to go back, "the harbor department, its director, and most members of board of supervisors and county staff have worked to represent the county's best interests under less than favorable conditions." I think if I was the harbor director, I'd be pretty proud of the grand jury after all of these allegations and stuff, to make a statement like that. So I would wholeheartedly support Supervisor Long's recommendation that we emphasize with the grand jury, that we strongly agree with their recommendation that if we are going to make allegations, that we have a responsibility to present the evidence at the same time, and also that we appreciate the fact that they have found no evidence of even favoritism, much less corruption or anything else. Thank you.
Supervisor Michaels, did you want to comment?
I think this has gone on far too long. I think the allegations have been made far too many times. They have been proven three times now to be untrue, and I for one, really don't want to hear it again. I think we've been through enough, and I think it's time to put the damn thing to bed and to acknowledge the fact that our harbor director, our harbor department and staff have done an outstanding job, and in very adverse conditions. I've been on this board long enough now to remember when Mr. Flynn was out there championing the harbor. "Oh, we got to do this, we got to do that." And then all of a sudden, who knows which way the wind was blowing that day, but he's against absolutely everything in the harbor. And he has rallied people out there to cause trouble, to do lawsuits, to question every move that the harbor director and this board of supervisors makes in relation to that harbor, and trying to improve it. It belongs to the taxpayers of this county. It is an asset. It should perform as an asset. It is not somebody's personal backyard. And I for one, refuse to listen to these allegations again. I don't want to see them come before the board. I think we're done. And I would like to say that I do support the notifying the grand jury that we do agree with their findings, in particular, that we all have a moral responsibility, to use your own words, to tell the truth at all times, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
And I would just like to comment that I'm glad that this is given the thorough review, and that we, it is something that, you know, three different bodies went through and investigated and looked at. So I, I think it's gotten thorough review. My personal opinion, I think, a supervisor says there's a payoff, there's a sweetheart deal. I think that's a little carried away. Do some of the lesssees at the harbor, are, do they have a good, a good deal? They probably think so, because they're paying to, to be at the harbor. And the whole basis, I think, of these amendments and such, is to get us into leases that can see improvement in the harbor. And I think that's what we all want to do. We want to see improvement at the harbor. And when we have previous old leases that say, "When you leave the harbor, you can take all the slips with you and all the docks with you," I mean, those are horrible leases, and we needed to get that kind of language out of there, because you end up in situations like the previous owner, lessee, the Farrell's, evicting everybody, you know? That's like the worst thing you can see happen. And I, you know, and I was very proud of the county to go to court and do it and try to get an injunction to keep everyone from being evicted. But when you see that leases can be interpreted in such ways, it was incumbent on us to make sure that those leases got changed. And we have also been able to get language in leases to allow, instead of having to cancel the whole lease, to actually require the lessee to continue doing maintenance and continue fixing up. And the whole basis of all the leases is to see that we get an improved harbor, to get, you know, old facilities repaired, old facilities made new again. That's our intent, and we need to work together as a board on this. And I, I think that we have made some good movement. Our last study, work-study session here at the board, I think, was very productive, and we, we need to continue making those steps. And the best way to make those steps, I think, is putting this behind us. And I'm really hoping that we can do that as a board and move forward, because there's definitely good things we can do. And we, we do need to be very, we have to have a lot of scrutiny when we look at leases, obviously. But when we approve them, we move on, and I'm really looking forward to start seeing some of those improvements and going there for some ribbon cuttings and seeing the vitality come back. But it, it's a struggle, and it takes a lot of work, and it takes a lot of partnership with our private sector. So hopefully, we can have a good atmosphere to encourage that kind of development and rejuvenation of the harbor, and it really has to start here in the relationships that we have with people at the harbor. So I look forward to hopefully moving forward and putting this behind us.
Could we hear from Mr. Johnson now?
Mr. Johnson?
Let me supervise it. Flynn, more to follow. All right, just make, make a few comments here. When you, first of all, it's not a comforting thing to be one person bringing up an issue like that, like this. It's not politically to that person's advantage or any, anything else. It's, it's very difficult. And you've expressed some of that. But when you take the oath, the oath to the California Constitution and to the Constitution of the United States, you're taking a very serious oath to protect the public trust. And here, I'm presenting to you two areas. The lack of a bonus payment is one, and not charging 25% of gross rent is the other. Those are two major issues. And I ask you, if you have received information from the public, as I did, what is one to do if the information looks like it's credible, if it looks like it has substance? What is one to do? I did go into closed session with you, and I discussed several problems that I had with the harbor. But my interpretation of your reaction was, "These folks have a tin ear. They're not hearing me. They don't want to hear me." So the documentation that I have here runs counter to what the grand jury has to say about documentation. I don't know their expertness in doing research work. I don't know that. But I do know that I have a master's degree, and I've done lots of research work, and I know what documentation is, and that's what I have presented to you today. Some of you complain about the time. It took the grand jury six months. Not John Flynn. It took the grand jury six months to investigate this. But, you know, you can't, I, I've heard you kind of go around the issue. You've got to get to the truth, and the truth is what I tried to present to you today. You can't avoid the truth. The truth is going to keep at you. And I do appreciate your comments, even though some of them were negative. I expected that. And I thank Madam Chair for you allowing me to make the presentation.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't think it's healthy for any of us to get into it, but back and forth, so I would just offer this statement. Today, I didn't hear any, any justification for why this evidence couldn't have been presented publicly at a, anywhere near reasonably close to when the allegation was made. There's no reason why, if this is all public, why that information couldn't have been made public at the time, so that the people could have defended themselves. So with that, I have to conclude that after the district attorney, with his expertise, examined this, and the grand jury's examined this, that the credibility of the allegations and of the person making the allegations simply is, is, is not there. It's nonexistent. And so I'd like to hear what kind of...
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, hear from Mr. Johnson, then hear Supervisor Long's motion.
Well, I don't know that, quite how this all fits in, but I will do what I usually do, and I'm just sort of let it flow. Supervisor Flynn, you asked, "What is one to do?" Well, first of all, I go back to another question that was asked by the newspapers after the report came out. They said, "What impact do you think this will have?" And I said, "I hope it will elevate the level of debate." And I'm gratified to see today that it has considerably improved the tenor of our discussions. But what is one to do? This morning, you heard from a citizen using the rights of citizenry and Brown Act, you know, open discussion, freedom of speech, who asked a question. And the question was, "Do we, have we spent $5 million twice?" Legitimate question to ask. Some people ask those questions, and they're looking for an answer. Others are making basically a statement or an accusation. Fortunately, the question this morning was, was truly a question, and it was easily answered. And I think the problem we've been having here is the question that was asked of me back in November is different than what we're asking now, and I think the question's legitimate, and I think you deserve an answer to that. I don't think it required a grand jury investigation and a district attorney to get here, but that's taken care of, and so now we go forward. I think it's a legitimate question to say, you know, "Why did these things happen?" Or, "Did these things happen?" I have never received this, so I am not in a position, or is this the time, to answer that, but I will. And I think the difficulty was, when it was suggested that there was a conspiracy, that land leases and water leases had been surreptitiously divided, and then it turned out that it actually was done in this boardroom several years earlier, and you, Supervisor, had made the motion, maybe not knowing what all the implications of it were, but that was the first fact that we found. Then we went to the next, which said, "We, the county gave," or "The harbor director gave away a very valuable lease to somebody in return for a favor," or at least that was the implication, and it turned out, no, we didn't give the lease to anybody. The county didn't have the right to give the lease to anybody. And the favor that was suggested was that the person receiving the lease had then changed their position and had supported the boating center. And that turned out not to be a fact, that the individual that was accused of that was one of the originators of the boating center and always had supported it. So since that person had not received anything, had not done anything, and we had no power to do anything, I conclude, I just closed the investigation and said, "I think there's been a big mistake made here, and the idea of sweetheart deal or corruption maybe was an overstatement by, to say the least." Now we are, it's being suggested that there were, what are the reasons for what happened? And I think we'll have an answer for that, whether everybody would agree with it. But I presume that the grand jury looked at these very same things. In fact, I'm pretty sure they did. I know the district attorney looked at these same things, and they did not find any malfeasance, corruption, or the rest of it. But reasonable people can differ, and if there's a difference of opinion as to how business should be conducted in the harbor, we should talk about that. But I don't think it needs to reach the level where it's put you and everybody else, you know, at each other and spend all the time and, and the money. So it's unfortunate, but at least we are now to a stage where we can go forward, and I would encourage all of us, I think we can exercise free speech and also the responsibility to be somewhat sensitive to the fact that sometimes you can't unring the bell, and when you make a suggestion, anybody of us makes suggestions about the integrity of individuals coming from this level, that will last for a very long time, if not indefinitely, even though there may be nothing to it. And I think that's unfortunate. So I, I agree with what the grand jury has suggested, and I will look into the question Supervisor Flynn has raised, and we'll get you a public answer.
Thank you. And do we have a motion then?
Yes, Madam Chair. On item R007, on the issue related to allegations of mismanagement, I'd recommend we send forward an agreement to the statement that the board of supervisors strongly agrees with the grand jury's recommendation, R007. The board recognizes that, particularly when we speak from the dius, we have the ability to dramatically tarnish an individual or company's reputation. Our board stands against the inherently unfair practice of making public accusations that are claimed to be supported by evidence, but then withholding the evidence. Such a practice makes it impossible for the accused to defend themselves against groundless accusations. The board agrees with the grand jury that if a board member is going to make an allegation of malfeasance, they have a responsibility to promptly and publicly provide the evidence at the same time they make the public allegation.
Second.
Second. We have a motion in a second, and hopefully, we won't have other allegations that we'll have to use this for. Do I see any objection to the motion and do go ahead and approve this recommendation of the grand jury in support of it?
This is to send this language forward in our report back to the grand jury.
Now, this would be an informal letter, right?
And our responses that we normally give to the grand jury.
I will reserve the right to file a minority report after I see what the report is.
This is specific to making allegations without providing information?
I will, I will reserve that right.
So are you in favor of the motion or opposing?
No, not in favor.
So would that be a 4-1 then? Okay, motion passes on a 4-1.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Long?
On the ones, I think we need to act on 01 through 05. If there's any discussion, or just to say we're in agreement with the recommended actions, as Mr. Johnson's already touched on those, to say that they're either in process, they're going to be in process. So a motion to agree with that directed action by Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
Carry it forward.
We have a motion in a second regarding the responses. Seeing any objection, Mr. Flynn, will you object to that one?
I object.
You object to that too? Okay, so that-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. So that then passes 4 to 1.
And then on R-006, where the grand jury is talking about the redrawing of districts, I would like to suggest we have language in there by motion that the Board of Supervisors support the recommendation of the Ventura County 2005, 2006 grand jury on R-006, and directs that the recommendation be forwarded to the planning department and noted in the file for consideration when the 2010 redistricting process commences.
And if I could just ask, that's not to determine what's going to happen.
No.
It's just to make sure that when we-
Make a note for the file.
When we go, that this issue is brought back up for us to consider.
Well, Madam Chair, if I can speak to that.
Certainly.
Just briefly, I welcome any kind of withdrawing, redrawing, rather, of the district lines, including that one, because I think they really need to be redrawing. You have way too much stuff in your district, and then now you want to take over the harbor? So I welcome that.
This is not suggesting anyone taking over the harbor. It just says it should be noted for the record.
I understand, but I support the motion.
Yes, we, so on this motion then, looking at when we come back with the census data, not to have the harbor-
Roberto?
Into lots of small strips. We have a motion, and we have a second, and that passes unanimously this time. So that's the one recommendation from the commission, from the grand jury that is supported unanimously. Supervisor Bennett?
I'd just like to ask Supervisor Long, I just want to clarify that first motion that you read, the motion about, could you read the second half, I mean, the final part, which is-
On 07?
Yeah, yeah, 07, which is, I just, that first motion is, which was, it says, it's essentially, the motion essentially says, if we make an allegation, we have a responsibility to-
The board agrees with the grand jury that if a board member is going to make an allegation of malfeasance, they have a responsibility promptly and publicly provide the evidence at the same time they make the public allegation.
Wow, okay.
I think my explanation treated that issue.
And we'll have a minority report against it. All right, I think that concludes all of our item 42 on that one. And I think we've also pretty much moved through our whole agenda, except for our time-certain item to come, which is our closed session, and then also our study session, a follow-up study session on the harbor. I hope you'll come back for that if you're here and interested in harbor issues. I think that's critical to have input from the public on what you want to see in the harbor in the future. We need public comments. So I hope you will come back for that. But right now, we're going to go into our closed session and be back at 1:30 for our time certain on the harbor itself. Thank you. Good afternoon. The Board of Supervisors for July 11th will reconvene. Nice to see everybody here. We're working on our agenda, and this is a work-study session on the harbor. I'm really glad to see everybody here today. I think in the future, we're going to make an attempt to notice everyone who does come so that they can come again to a following session. There's a lot of activities happening at the harbor, and we're really desirous of getting input from the public, as well as being able to have as much transparency as possible and give people an opportunity to see what plans that we're looking at for the harbor. But I do encourage participation. If you want to speak, please bring, fill out one of those blue public comment cards, and we'll call you up. At this point, I see we just have one, so, but thank you, everyone, for coming. We've had some discussions already this morning. I see we have some members of the grand jury here, and we actually had an item on the grand jury on the harbor department and had that discussion a little bit earlier. But the board did approve many of the recommendations, actually all the recommendations, in support of what the grand jury found. So thank you for the investigation and the work that you've done on that. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Lynn Krieger, who has a PowerPoint presentation, and also, back to, you know, trying to get that transparency, want to make sure that we have these documents available in advance. And I know I had asked for that, but this one was not prepared until, I guess, yesterday afternoon.
This morning at 11:00 was the-
This morning at 11:00. But I would very much like in the future to be able to have documentation, you know, available in our packet, actually, so people can see what we're presenting and have some idea of what's coming, so. Lynn, if you'd like to take over?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Lynn Krieger from the harbor department. And I might add, Chair Parks, just to your comment, that we have already by telephone contacted a number of people and are planning to make copies of the PowerPoint available, as well as copies of a DVD of this meeting, so that people can follow along. A number of them said they weren't able to be here and would like such copies. So it's easy for us to burn those copies in our office once we have one, and we're happy to do it for the public. The other thing people, if they pass on to their friends, is generally after we come to the board with a presentation like this, we present it again at the harbor commission, because oftentimes harbor commissioners aren't all able to come, although I notice we do have a few here today. So that's another chance for people to get in on some discussion.
Would it be possible to introduce the harbor commissioners that are here today? I don't know if I've met them all.
Yeah, maybe they could stand. Any harbor commissioners here? I know I saw three. Steve Campbell from Judy Michaels District, Supervisor Michaels, Barbara Harrison, who's currently vice chair from Supervisor Bennett's district, and Mr. Pinkard, who is from the fifth district.
Thank you.
All right, we are here to do the follow-up somewhat later to the March 14th study session that we had regarding the harbor. And I'm just trying to decide, I think I'll use the laser here if I need to show anything. It's kind of hard with two screens. Next, Jenny. Okay, the options that were discussed, these first two slides are actually the last two slides approximately from your last presentation, just to kind of give us a lead-in to this afternoon's work. We discussed options at the March 14th study session. The first is a single comprehensive update, including reconciliation with the Oxnard Local Coastal Plan. Second, for the county to cluster projects and revise the PWP by topic. And finally, to amend the PWP on a project-by-project basis. Next. And this is again from last, from March, from the March presentation. Where do we go from here? Identify the PWP amendment process to be utilized, confirm the issues to be addressed, identify project clusters, if any, and a timeline to return to the board. So we are here to do these four items today in follow-up to the discussion. In meeting with coastal staff, since we talked to you, we made the presentation, as I said, to the harbor commission. We've had a chance to talk to lessees. We've had some input from the public. And it seems that the desired amendments to the Public Works Plan divide easily into two clusters, and there may be a number of reasons for doing this. I offer this for your consideration. The first readily identifiable cluster is the recreational boating cluster, and the second is landside renovation and replacement. Next. The recreational cluster, calling it that for today's discussion only, would include some land uses that are water recreation-based, such as dry storage authorizations on the land, because that's where some of the boats will be that are currently in the water, and the increasing number of boats in the county as the population grows, some of those will be on land. Extension of the pierhead line, the lease lines in the harbor in only selected locations to provide some room for additional slips. Adding wet slips where feasible. I think some of you who've been at coastal commission hearings hear that they want us to look for water space wherever it can be found, since they don't anticipate approving any new harbor or marina areas in Southern California. To review the recent coastal commission policy regarding slip sizes, and we would propose doing this on a comprehensive basis, rather than just one marina at a time, even though each marina may have some different requirements. And establishing a coordinated administrative approach to approving repair and replacement projects. That would be included next. In the landside portion of the review, and we're not proposing that these be terribly far apart in time, would be the renovation, expansion, enhancement of visitor-serving projects that already exist in the harbor, adding uses, such as office and residential, to support the visitor-serving, commercial and off-peak. And by that, I mean, on weekdays in the winter, the visitor, we don't have enough just gross visitors to keep those businesses alive. So by having some office and residential, it can help support those uses, which are preferred under the coastal act. Adjusting height limits to emphasize visitor-serving opportunities. There may be some places where additional height is warranted, others where it is not. Added and reconfigured parks, we touched on that last time, and we'll hit it again today. And completion and enhancement of the public promenade harbor-wide. Next. I should comment briefly that, I think it was you Supervisor Parks who made a comment, that we might do the public improvements as an overlay that would apply to both amendments. And that's certainly something we can take a look at as a procedural. I'm not quite sure how that would work, but the public projects do apply to both. So how to consider integrating those in, rather than dividing them, is an interesting question. Then there is one standalone project that we would propose, and that's the establishment of a heron habitat on the west side. We can get back to the location of that today. This effort, if it was supported by the Department of Fish and Game and the coastal commission, could possibly go sooner without a public works plan amendment, because it would be park space, it would just be for a specialized use. Next. In the proposed cluster number one, and even going to two clusters, you can see these are going to be pretty large, pretty large collections. Cluster number one, recreational boating, would include the Channel Islands harbor-marina landside improvements. boating, would include the Channel Islands Harbor Marina landside improvements. This includes the restrooms, the marina office, storage, yacht club and recreational equipment in the parks. This is what got set aside because of staff time, staff time availability at the Coastal Commission. Peninsula Yacht Anchorage Reconstruction, and we have pictures of each of these. Bahia Marina Reconstruction, Channel Islands Landing Slip Construction, Channel Islands Boatyard Slip Reconstruction, plus boatyard improvements related to the water uses. No sense in replacing all the slips if we can't service the boats at the boatyard. Ana Capa Marine Services Slip Reconstruction, X3 Slip additions. Marine Emporium Landing Slip Reconstruction. Next. The Small Boat Marina, which is a county-operated facility, Slip Reconstruction. Added dry storage capacity, both surface and dry stack. This is another area where we are under significant pressure from the Coastal Commission to consider. Added wet slip capacity where feasible. Correcting slip numbers throughout the harbor, and I know we'll touch on this again. Adding the repair and reconstruction language, and updating the marine-related zoning language. And in this area, we don't, there's no reconciliation needed with the Oxnard LCP, because it only covers the land. Next. Now, going through these marine-related items one at a time, there are a couple that are omitted, because there's really nothing to show you. But in Channel Islands Harbor Marina, for example, we're talking about the restrooms, marina office, storage, yacht club, recreational equipment. The restrooms, there are three. One here, one here attached to the office, and one here. There's an additional public restroom down the way. The marina office, which needs renovation, is attached to the restrooms here. Storage, I'll come back to in a minute. Renovation of the yacht club, here. The storage is in each of these restroom areas. There is some vacant space. There's a little room for expansion to provide handicapped accessible restrooms, handicapped accessible showers, some lockers for boaters, so that some things that shouldn't be stored on the dock, don't need to be stored on the dock. It's much safer all the way around. And some laundry facilities, so that we discourage people from using their laundry facilities on their boats and discharging gray water into the harbor. We see those as all pluses. The recreational equipment was an offer that was made as part of the RFP process for this marina, and that is for some recreational equipment in the park, whether it's barbecue pits, or picnic tables, or children's play equipment, to make it a true functioning park. Next. Peninsula Yacht Anchorage Slip Reconstruction, this is one portion. The remainder's on the next slide. You can see here the way the marina is built, on the way the lines go. We are proposing that this area be truly squared off, that everybody understand that this, these vacant water areas with reconfiguration and rebuilding may be able to be used for additional slips, isolated use for some of the larger slips. I'm not sure what yet, but it is water area that can be used without affecting the width of the channels. Next. We're looking for every scrap of waterway here we can find. Again, Peninsula Yacht Anchorage, this continues around from the area right here that was just squared off. This would remain substantially the same, obviously, with different slips and slip widths. We're looking potentially for a minor pierhead extension here, somewhere between six and 10 feet, to allow for some larger boats. These are all very small. And if you go down there now in a boat, you will see that a number of them overhang their slips by a fair amount, because of the demand for slips there. But these would still be relatively moderately sized slips. Next. Bahia Cabrillo Slip Reconstruction, pierhead extension and additional slips, again, looking for those scraps of waterway. This is where there's a bend in the channel headed toward the entrance. And we believe that by just extending this parcel slightly, we can make some room for additional slips. Not speaking at all to what the reconfiguration would be at this point in time. Again, just looking for those scraps of waterway where we can fit something additional. Next. Channel Islands Landing and Boatyard, again, slip replacement. These are probably now our oldest, and because Channel Islands Marina will be replaced. This is the one that most needs replacement after that. Boatyard improvements and pierhead extension. And here, you'll notice that we have been consulting with the Coast Guard. They have asked us, based on a placement of some boys, to maintain the width of the basin here, because this is where people are towed in alongside and turned, if they're brought in as a tow-along. They want to preserve that area. They had less concern about this part of the channel. The county has already set the standard by having its marina out a fair ways, and it's a dead-end channel, so they're much less concerned there. This is another scrap of water that could be dedicated to more slips. Next. Same thing with Ana Capa Marine Services Slip Reconstruction and Pierhead Extension. It is right next to the county's Small Boat Marina. Next. And by extending that line out to match, now this just gives you an idea, this is certainly not a commitment on anybody's part, but that you could have the slips that are there, plus an additional double row of slips. Again, it's a scrap of water that's currently underutilized that could deal with some of our shortage of slips. Next. X3 Slip additions. This has also been discussed for a period of years, the potential to use the end of this peninsula, either in what's called a pitchfork fashion, or as a long-side tie to create some additional tie-ups for boats in this area. Next. Marine Emporium Landing Slip Reconstruction. This is intended to be essentially a replacement. These are also aging slips, not in as bad a condition as Channel Islands Boatyard, but they are definitely getting older. Next. And the Small Boat Marina Slip Replacements. This is the county's Small Boat Marina outlined in yellow. We don't have any particular plans there yet, but we have done a great deal of maintenance, replacement of some of the floats. And we know in the next 10 years or so, that will need replacement. And we thought, as long as we're working on the Public Works Plan, we should plan to accommodate that now, rather than going through this whole process again, and examine it as part of the comprehensive planning for the harbor. Next. The old launch ramp, this is the area that is in temporary storage right now. There are several options for this parcel. Again, as I said, this is an area that's of significant interest to the Commission. And those of you who were at the May hearing heard that from the commissioners themselves, as well as from staff, that additional space on land to store boats is of terribly high interest to them. So, the potentials here are for dry stack storage, if such a use is not accommodated on the privately-held parcel. It could be continued land-based storage, continued land-based dry storage, I guess those two got separated. It could be a high-quality RV park, that was suggested long before I ever got here. We do, we may propose, do propose at this time, maintaining this park space, although I'm not sure how heavily it's utilized. And once we do all of the park planning, you may want to look at that again. Next. Okay, so we're looking at the following locations, you can see here, as potential places to do real additions to added wet slip capacity. It's not a huge number, but we can't find any other locations. There's really no room to extend out any of these lease parcels. This is an active channel. This one has already been extended 20 feet. So, it really only leaves these areas and this little spot right here on the side.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I mean, I think, I think somebody that does a notice says, so why? What's, why the push to find more slip space? Why the push to this?
Well, there would be two answers to that question. One is that Ventura County's a growing county, and has always had a large boater population. We had, at last count, more than 22,000 registered boats, like DMV licenses, in Ventura County. And in the water, there are really only about 5,000 slips. So, a number of those are lake boaters, but still, there are a number of, you can see, all the area we have dedicated to dry storage here. And the county continues to grow. The second reason is that, as you've experienced with the Channel Islands Harbor Marina project, as marinas are rebuilt, and the slips are required to get wider, as the boats are wider, and as the docks are required to get wider to meet ADA standards, you lose water space and you lose slips. I think, was it 49, Brian, or 48, that you lost to ADA alone in the rebuilding of that marina. So, looking for some replacements for those slips for people who are already in the water is of very high interest.
So, if, to rebuild any existing dock space
Right.
means we're going to have fewer slips because of the ADA requirements
Correct.
and other requirements. And so then to, so just to keep the harbor at the same number of slips, you've got to find new slip space?
Correct. Next. The other thing we'd like to do in this marina side, and this is the center column here just deals with number of slips, is go back and correct the errors or changes in the Public Works Plan that have to do with numbers of slips in each of the marinas. Those that are lined out in red are the numbers that are currently in error, and we think that's a signal to you that we have some work to do to get those corrected.
Easily over half of them.
Yeah, easily over half. And that doesn't count the building issues on the right-hand side with square footages. Next.
How did we get that so out of whack?
Well, I'm not too sure. You have to remember, the document is 20 years old. Slips are counted differently. Boats are different sizes now, and are utilizing the slips differently. It is true that you can send five people out in an afternoon, well, recently, we did it on our own staff with three people, and went out to count dry slips on Frank Butler's parcel, and we came back with three different answers. They were only off by three or four. But it's how you count the end ties, how you count the inside ties. I think in some cases here, there were just flat errors. Channel Islands Marina existed when the plan was done, always had 520-some slips at a minimum, and is listed in the plan at 488. Why is that there? I have no idea, but it's time that it be corrected.
That listing took place 20 years ago?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And then adding the administrative process, what we're talking about here is to streamline the process of repair to marinas and marina facilities by creating a process that we work out with the Coastal Commission, so that we're not doing a notice of impending development in this whole lengthy process every time you just want to do a repair. They want us to change that, and we'd like to change that. They don't have the staff time to do this kind of repair. Certain kinds of repair and replacement and maintenance activities could be formally exempted. And then there are other activities that could be undertaken by the county with an administrative permit process and without a notice of impending development. Obviously, the Coastal Commission and you would have to approve all of those processes, but that's what we're talking about here. If someone's going out and replacing all their dock lockers, storage boxes, there's no reason that that needs an extraordinary permitting process. Next. Here, we're talking about modernizing the marine-related zoning. And if you look in the PWP, you will see, our zoning is also old, probably older than the 1986 adoption date, because we started a couple of years ahead. But there are things in there that we are not going to do. Fish processing plants are allowed in certain locations. It's probably not going to happen. There are major industrial uses that are allowed. You might as well take it out, because you may be creating rights for people to do things that you don't want to have happen. The other thing is that we would like the zoning to provide for inclusion of public-access uses, even if not designated in the PWP, so that the public access in the Coastal Act always takes priority. And then setting parking standards for waterside uses. The city of Oxnard has no standards for parking. We have no standards for parking in the current PWP. And I think it would be beneficial to you and to the county to have that clearly outlined for. So, everyone is the same, like a normal zoning process. Next. Timeline, we're looking at potentially submitting the PWP amendment for the recreational boating, because this is much more straightforward to your board, sometime in October. I'm thinking it would be late in the month of October, and submit the amendment then immediately thereafter. So, this is on a fairly rapid timeline. We'll be coming back to this again later. Next. The proposed second cluster, which is landside, and I'm glad you all have print copies. I hope the audience does, because this is hard to track. It's a lot of projects without it. The landside projects, Fisherman's Wharf redevelopment, Casa Serena Hotel redevelopment, Marine Emporium Landing expansion, Cisco Sport Fishing reuse and revitalization, harbor lights disposition, whatever is going to happen there. The remaining land-based changes to Channel Islands Boatyard, they are proposing replacing some of their existing buildings, which probably do need it. Parcel X3 land use change, we talked about that last time. Identifying and permitting additional and reconfigured park space, all as part of that. Because you'll see, for example, on the Casa Serena site, there will be some new outlooks or little pocket parks, and those all will need to be added in. Next.
Do you have an idea about where you'd like to go with Parcel X3?
Not really. I mean, I think that's up for discussion.
Certainly.
There have been a number of ideas that have been brought forward on that site, ranging from a visitor-serving use, such as a bed-and-breakfast-type hotel. Yacht brokers have often, you know, kind of lathered over that site, because it's right there with the boats. Others have suggested we need a breakfast and a place to sit outside and be able to view the harbor and just sit and enjoy a cup of coffee and a paper. So, there have been a number of suggestions like that. Office uses have been suggested.
Also, where are you looking at in terms of the suggestion to increase park area for heron rookery?
That, we'll be coming to that here shortly.
Okay, I'm jumping the gun. Thanks.
Okay. The remainder of proposed Cluster Two would be update visitor-serving and other land-based zoning language, similar to the marine side. It's old and kind of crusty. Develop an appropriate view corridor policy. We're not guessing at this point what that might be, but I think we suggested to you last time that we might be better off designating actual view corridors, instead of saying a certain percentage of the harbor, so we're not constantly arguing. But we can work that out with you as we go along. Correct. Again, same as in the marinas, numerous errors in parcel sizes, building square footages and so forth, that all needs to be brought up to date. Correct errors and update existing heights and height limits. I think we've also talked about this before. I think the whale's tail, I think the lessees here, tops out at about 43 feet, but is in a 25-foot height zone. It existed when the Public Works Plan was put in place. Same with the Casa Serena Hotel is about 40 feet and is in a 25-foot zone. All of those things should be corrected as we go through this process. And some of them will need to be updated with replacement buildings. And then on the land side, we do have some reconciliation to do with the Oxnard LCP, to bring them in conformance with each other. An LCP, Local Coastal Plan, for those who don't know. Next. Is there one more? And then update all the environmental protection sections, particularly on that land, and that's with regard to bird species and the new heron habitat, if we're so lucky, is to work that out. We have a grape blue on the right, and the black-crowned night heron on the right. Next. Okay, Fisherman's Wharf, replacement or renovation. You remember, we have the funny parcel line that currently divides the leasehold. That at least needs to be fixed. We had talked in public at the Harbor Commission and in front of your board about the potential for expansion. It was mentioned in the RFP. This is the maximum potential expansion area that has been discussed, and that would be addressed during the landside. Next. Fisherman's Wharf, a new retail development, expand the parcel, mixed use, a broader pedestrian promenade and a commons area for the public to enjoy, more public access to the water. I think we could have a significant view corridor here, and potential for a height increase, currently estimated at 65 feet. Next. Casa Serena Hotel replacement. Now, this is the main portion of the hotel we're talking about. This piece, which is becoming the Hampton Inn, is well underway as we talk here. So, it's this portion of the hotel, next. Again, a new three-to-four-star hotel, a minimum of the same number of rooms. I think that's what they're required to do. A broader and more effective pedestrian promenade. Can you back up one, Jenny? Right now, the pedestrian promenade on this side narrows down to about two feet, and then dead ends right here. And you're practically in somebody's hotel room. And then it drops off and doesn't pick up again until near the lobster trap. Go back. Thank you. So, that all needs to be much broader, more effective, and enable people to get around the entire facility. Again, here, there's potential for a height increase, maybe not this high, but I'm giving you the outside numbers. Currently estimated at 60 feet to create more lawn area and to provide a landmark for people to head to. We're very interested in creating public space, green area, for the public to use. Here, reconfigured parking and new parks and/or outlooks, and that will come up again. Next.
That would require changing the PWP to increase the height, then?
Right.
Because it's not presently allowed.
Well, the current height is 25 feet, which is not what it is. So...
Okay, which we're seeing in other places, as you mentioned.
Yeah, many places, most places, except for our office. Marine Emporium Landing renovation and expansion, next slide. I think we've also talked about this one. This says existing building, because these plans have been out for a little while. It's actually the building that burned down and is headed toward reconstruction. The blue areas are the new expansion areas. This might be one example we are proposing right now, including it in this cluster of landside. This might be, there would be very few, but there may be occasions when the board decides to separate a project out and proceed separately. For example, a Fisherman's Wharf and the Casa Serena appear that they're going to take a very long time and have a great deal of sequoia to overcome. It may be that this project could be done more quickly, as long as it's been analyzed in a bigger context. But I'll leave that to you for future decisions. Right now, we have it clustered with the rest. Next. Cisco Sport Fishing reuse, this is another one. Do we have a planned use? Not particularly, but something, you know, harbor-dependent. It's currently designated commercial sport fishing with 31 slips and a 12,100-square-foot restaurant. Next. We're looking at a smaller sport fishing facility. It used to be, the sport fishing portion, used to be smaller. It used to be, the sport fishing portion, used to be smaller. Perhaps marine hardware facility or marine-related office. There's some potential for the Maritime Museum, a smaller restaurant, but we're proposing no change in the sport fishing slips. Next. Harbor lights reuse, designated restaurant. And the line here is an old one because this is the parcel, but this is one of the areas we're proposing for additional park, and that will also come up later, so don't be confused by it. Currently designated restaurant, just over 10,000 square feet. Next. Four restaurants have failed here, so we've been talking about considering a change in use unless a restaurant comes up that can make use of this property, which would be great. The changes could be residential. There's all residential next door. Office or some kind of fractional ownership facility. Next. Remaining land base changes to Channel Islands Boatyard. There is a large, forgive me because the lessee's Mr. Butler, a large Butler-type building here that he is proposing to remove and replace either with dry-stacked storage or some smaller use. And then there are a couple of other additional buildings on the premises, restrooms, office space, boat surveyors and so forth that would be either heavily renovated or replaced. All the asphalt would be replaced and a promenade established to continue through this area, hopefully some of it in this area. Next. Identify and permit additional reconfigured park. We've talked about this before, to add some kind of areas that would allow visitors to walk into the harbor and feel more welcomed. So some pocket parks, view outlooks and more commons areas. Next. The areas that we are talking about here include, this is expanded park, not quite out to the street but almost, and would also include the heron habitat over near the Bahia Cabrio in this area. Also, an expansion of the park here near Marine Emporium Landing and between the restaurants and the landing. This is not an exact location. It's intended to give you an idea of scale. And this might be an area where people are invited to walk in and through a park area instead of across the asphalt.
Walk in and...
Enjoy the area instead of coming across asphalt all the way.
So the response to my earlier question about the potential area for increased heron is in the existing location, basically?
Well, the herons right now are in this strath, which is a little more active, and we're thinking about, I mean, this is an area you're going to set aside in perpetuity or essentially in perpetuity not to develop. And this is an area that has been suggested to us by the biologist as being a potential area to take a look at. Now, there's a little less foot traffic.
There wouldn't be that connectivity necessarily with the existing rookery area?
Right. It would be a new, additional area. Doesn't mean necessarily removing anything that's here, although, you know, it might mean relocating some of those trees. Hard to tell at this point. This area only has an asterisk because without the reconfiguration of the hotel, it's difficult to tell, but ideally here, there should be a couple of spots along the pedestrian promenade that are pocket parks that people can sit and enjoy the harbor and would be additional park space. And then the area near the bridge that currently serves as a walk-under for the people from Mandalay Bay and Westport and Seabridge. It would be also nice for them to have, and other walkers from the hotel, visitors from elsewhere, have a nice walking path that goes all the way up through the Seabridge development. And a place to stop and sit and enjoy the boats. Next. Complete and improve the pedestrian promenade. We've talked about that before, and you see when we get down here, there are two parallel routes. Next.
Did the Seabridge development, was it conditioned to provide some off-site improvements such as helping to extend the promenades, the walkways?
Yeah, I know they were required to do promenades that covered their entire project, and we did meet with them to talk about how it was all going to connect in the end. But I don't recall requirements for them to participate in off-site, but we'll look at their documentation and see.
Thank you.
That'd certainly be helpful. Improving Harbor View Park. We've also discussed this before, having a little more breadth or green area on the water side of that parcel. Next. Launch ramp improvements. You saw that this morning. Next. With turning the launch ramp and making this ingress and egress a little bit easier for the boaters, plus the fact that it's falling apart and it's 30 years old as well. Next. Then reconciling with the Oxnard Local Coastal Plan. The California Coastal Act requires that this amendment, when we get to it, be in conformity with the Oxnard Local Coastal Plan, which was enacted after the PWP was certified, and we'd have to be working closely with the city on that. Next. So the timeline for the land. We would receive board direction on preferred projects and authorization for appropriate environmental review. That's not today, by the way. That would be a separate board matter at a future date. Submit a PWP amendment for the land side to the board, currently estimated for July of 2007. Depending on the speed of development of our lessees' plans, we can only move once the hotel lessee knows what it is he wants to do. Same with Fisherman's Wharf. Final Board of Supervisors certification of the PWP amendment and associated environmental documentation in November of 2007 and submit to the Coastal Commission in December 2007. So that would be some 18 months away. Next. The advantages to splitting this amendment in two rather than doing a single, well, there are many, but here are some. Waterside replacements are straightforward. You're not talking about intensity of development, height. You can't change the parcel lines by much because you have to leave channels to travel in. They've been considered by the Coastal Commission in general, so they're familiar with these kinds of projects, and they can move more quickly than some of these bigger, like the hotel replacement. The second thing is it allows the harbor to have experienced construction a portion at a time rather than bottling everything up and have land and waterside under construction for a five-year period, the entire thing. That would be very difficult for us to manage. And finally, the Coastal Commission staff have expressed that this would be far less demanding for them to process. The executive director has committed to work with us if we will recognize some of their staffing limitations. It's just more considerate of their workload demands. Next. The requested actions today, and then I know you'll have a lot of questions and public comment, but is to authorize us to proceed with these two recommended clusters and to further investigate the heron habitat. Obviously, we would have to come back on that. We have asked for the Coastal Commission to give us some advice and to have their biologist weigh in with us on what would work, but we'd like to at least be authorized to keep working. Secondly, we'd like you to direct us to come back with a budget for these project clusters, which will give you another chance to weigh in on whether you want, you know, how you want to proceed. Third, to direct us to complete the project descriptions for the recreational boating projects, so you know exactly what it is you're looking at. And then to return in October, probably later October, with waterside project descriptions, the PWP amendment and the associated environmental. Next. That's it. This is an actual picture from outside the harbor. No, we've just had a contribution of many, many photos for our photo archive, and see some of those reflected here, but this is one of them, and I think it's a great shot of the harbor in use. If there are questions, I'd be happy.
I'm sure we do have questions. Should we go to our public comment card first because we could go on for a while here?
Thank you.
Thank you. Three public comment cards. Mark Graves, Lee Quaintance, Vicky Finan. So Mark Graves, are you here? We'll pass on him temporarily and go to Lee Quaintance, followed by Vicky Finan.
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Lee Quaintance for the Beacon Foundation, which is a nonprofit environmental organization focused on coastal Ventura County. I had not intended to be here today since the way this matter was agendized, it does not, under proper construction of the Brown Act, permit action. It was to be, it appeared, a recitation by the Harbor Department of its reaction to what had been presented in the March meeting. But then I received a telephone call from Andy Culberson, the development consultant, this morning, and in response to my question about what would be done here, it appeared to me, and it certainly does appear to me now, that you are being asked to take actions which are not within the scope of the notice. And I think that's very important, and why I think it's important is that's the law. And the other reason it's very important is that any development in the harbor is highly controversial, and the public should have the opportunity to speak on it and not be blindsided. As you noted at the beginning, the materials were not available for anyone to see what was going to be requested of you. And definitely, several of these requests are actions of the board, and the setting of policy in this matter is actions. And among the failures that occur by blindsiding the public in this manner is that there's not an intelligent opportunity to react to what you have been given. I've recited the Brown Act rejection to any action here today in a letter that was distributed to you. On the subject of not being able to react, I lost track in this presentation of the number of amendments that would be required to the Public Works Plan if this plan were to be followed. Height restrictions change, the restriction on usage of more than 60% for non-boating-related, the configuration of the slips. It's not merely a matter of adding what are referred to here, I think, as patches of waterway. The slip layout will be changed also, and that will be a subject of public interest and controversy. This clustering concept, again, I feel inadequate to respond to specifics under the circumstances, but the clustering is just a repackaged piecemealing. Make no mistake about it. That's what it is. It's piecemealing. And I would remind you that in the grand jury report that you reviewed this morning, finding number two was, since 1986, a few BOS, water supervisors approved projects in the harbor required PWP amendments. These amendments, although subsequently approved by the CCC, were submitted on a piecemeal basis, thus causing delays in the approval process. Here we go again. And it is not possible to logically divide land side from water side. We're talking about a harbor. These things are interrelated. The schedule is also totally unrealistic if the law is to be complied with. We're in July, and in October, you're going to receive this PWP amendment, the land side one, and it's going to be submitted, assuming your approval, that same month, October 2006, to the Coastal Commission. Where's the environmental review? Apparently, there is none, once again. So I would urge you to ask the Harbor Department to return to you with a duly noticed, with materials available in advance, hearing on such aspects, including any of these requested actions requested of you today, at a subsequent meeting where the public will have been advised, been informed, received materials, and be in a position to intelligently comment. Thank you.
Mr. Quaintance?
Yes.
Obviously, there's like several different leaseholds out there. Each one wants to do improvements. Each one will be coming separately, more than likely, to the Coastal Commission for their improvements as they come through. What I see that we have today is just kind of an overview of a lot of the things that are coming before us, requests for improvements and the like. And what I was wondering, and it may just because we didn't give it to you in advance, it's kind of hard to just jump right now and say, are there things that you've heard today that you support or you don't like in terms of some of the suggested changes that you see coming forward? Obviously, there's going to have to be an incredible amount of detail before the board can vote on things like, you know, where the layout of the slips are going to be and the heights of the buildings. But in general, if there are some things that you can offer, you don't like the idea of separating those two, you know, do you have some other suggestions?
Well, many of the things are described so vaguely, it's really impossible to know exactly what is proposed. We're going to have dual use at Fisherman's Wharf. This is not conflated by the Public Works Plan, that there be any additional residential. We're going to increase heights on various parcels. And the fact that there may have been a parcel that previously, before the Public Works Plan was taller, is not relevant. What's relevant is, what's the effect of doing that environmentally? This subject has come up in the past. And the concern is not only the public's view from the land, but the public's view from the water and whether you can see the mountains. The idea of the low density of this harbor is to be, in a vague way here, we're going to rethink that. We're going to rethink the zoning and what's permitted. We may permit a lot of other things, so not only type of activity, but the percent of land use. And the Public Works Plan says the harbor is built out. Going to take X3, which has been set aside for a public use, and carve part of it off for a few big slips. There are myriad changes here.
We do prefer...
You know, at one point, you suggested, which I think was a good one, that there ought to be a charrette process for this harbor, the most valuable asset of the county, of all the people in the county. There seemed to be some receptiveness to that, but instead, we've ended up here with what I would submit to you is instead of a charrette, a charade. So there are lots of problems here.
Thank you. And I appreciate the concept of you from the ocean, looking at the land. I think the Coastal Commission recently got overturned on that, but nonetheless, that is valuable asset to be able to have that view. And it sounds like you'd also like to see small slips at X3 if we're going to be putting slips there, not necessarily just for the largest ships.
I'd like to see a thorough process with a complete environmental review for any changes to a Public Works Plan that has served this county very well since 1986.
And I assure you, that will be, but what we're looking at here, like you said, is just kind of more of a broad overview of it. But as each thing comes through, if it's not compliant with the PWP, we'll actually have to have that lessee or whatever do the PWP amendment. And I appreciate, you know, your concern for the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vicky Finan, and followed by Mark Graves, if Mark is here.
I wasn't prepared to come back today, but I did see the grand jury findings and report and found it very interesting and decided that I would come back too. I have to echo Mr. Quaintance's comments about this process. You are trying to control this whole thing and tell everybody what is going to be in a public harbor and how it's going to fit here. And this is our opportunity, you know, you're saying 65-foot buildings and all these other things that are very different than what is down there now and what a lot of us know anything about, what would have space and room for. Right now, we're at a critical mass, is what I would call it, the amount of people that come and try and park in our community. And these things were in the original Public Works document, but there just isn't the opportunity to give this any kind of thought process when you present it this way, and I object to it completely. I think that it is just a farce. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the concern too for building heights. I think, you know, that is shared. And I would like to be able to have an opportunity for the public to digest some of this and be able to comment on it at a later time because this is kind of sudden to all of a sudden say, here's what are all these different plans for these different areas? Comment, because you don't have a chance to look at it in advance. But the truth is, there are a lot of different lessees that are looking at doing improvements, and we're looking at a lot happening all at once. So I feel comfortable that we need to present this as much as possible and make it as available in advance. So our next and last speaker, if he's here, is Mark Graves, and I'm not seeing him, so now I'll go to board questions and...
Mr. Mark Graves.
Would you like to bring your card up?
Please. I'm sorry.
It'll be our last speaker card from the public on this, unless I see any others? Could you state your name, please?
My name's Joe Hennessy. I've been in the small boat harbor for about 15 years now, and that's where my, I'm not too eloquent, so sorry if I make some mistakes. I wrote down some thoughts this morning. And I've been in the small boat marina, like I say, for about 15 years, so that's where my standpoint is coming from. And I just have some thoughts, if I can read it to you. Is the county of Ventura to abandon the harbor in what was supposed to be used for the enjoyment of all the residents and ready to reduce its usage to just yachts and large vessels? Many years ago, the county mandated that the small boat marina be maintained in the harbor for users that could either not afford or didn't want a larger boat. And the small boat marina was supposed to be just that, marina for small boats that county residents can use and enjoys the harbor and surrounding waters. If the county and the Harbor Department decide to move in the direction of just having harbor use for larger vessels and bigger businesses, why not get rid of like the whale's tail or port rail and put it in a Walmart? Maybe McDonald's instead of lobster trap, you know? Indeed, if the county does go in the direction of pushing out the smaller boat users, maybe the sailing community, it's not such a good idea, or I'm sorry, maybe the sailing center is not such a good idea after all. If we have a bunch of small boats trying to sail around, just learning how to sail, and they have a bunch of large boats around, yeah, that can be a problem. The design for the new ramp, I don't have the picture, sorry. The design for the new ramp, I don't have the picture, sorry. The design for the new ramp also endangers the users of the Marina, it's just on the north slip now, because they've moved it so much closer. And a lot of these people I've witnessed over the years aren't the best at launching boats and coming in and out. It's just going to be, it's, it's getting close to be a nightmare there anyway, but right now, with that moved over, it's really going to be dangerous, in my opinion. I think the parking lot design can be changed a little bit to improve these, coming out Curlew now, to exit that way, you only can have one or two, maybe, cars or trucks and boats being able to pull out onto the street without blocking the entrance to Curlew before the light changes. And I'm sure that'll be a very busy intersection right now.
I'm sorry, could you specify again which parking lot?
Um, on Curlew, right there, at the Small Boat Marina. The way it's designed now is, um, there'll be one entrance and one exit right there.
Okay.
And with the, um, with the amount of vehicles, it's going to be really tight, I believe. Like I say, I just came upon this recently, so I don't, I'm not too well-versed on all the matters. I just ask that you reconsider any proposals at this time and consider long-term impacts that this could have down the road. I mean, you could be opening up, you know, a very long-term process, which things can change drastically. Thank you.
Question of the speaker?
Yes.
You had said there was one place where you thought people would not be backing in and out, you know, in terms of launching their boats.
In the launch ramp right there, it shifted from one area.
You're talking about the rotation of the launch ramp?
Yes. It's moved closer to the Small Boat Marina right now. And on that one north side, I just have concern with people coming into that one arm, then people trying to get out.
Thank you. Well, I'll ask our staff to address that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate them. Okay, and with that, we'll go to board comments and questions. And again, this, these aren't action items before us. Actually, Mr. Claybaum, did you want to address the concern about what the Brown Act and how this is agendized and what we can do?
Certainly. Your board is, in fact, not being asked to take action today. You're being asked to provide direction to staff towards working for a future action, bringing something back on a future agenda. The Brown Act specifically provides for that, even on matters that are not agendized. And so I don't believe, contrary to Mr. Quaintance's statements, that your board would be taking action today if you merely provide direction to staff on what it ought to bring back to you for action at a future date.
Thank you.
One other question?
Yes, sir.
Tell us, you or Anne County Council, what about the issue of when does the environmental review take place, so we can get that on the record, please?
The environmental, well, and our timelines may be adjusted depending on what we find out on the environmental. Part of the reason the land side is estimated to take a good 18 months from this point is that the environmental review will need to be done once it comes to your board for some, yes, this is the direction we'd like to move, then we'll need to do the environmental review. And we're estimating that will take about nine months to do out of the 18. The previous nine months would be working. On the Marina-related side, there may not be as much to be done, because we are not radically increasing numbers of slips. We are not doing intensive changes in use. We're really not proposing many on the land side either, but they are certainly more dramatic than in the water. So we're thinking the environmental would be done this fall, but it won't require as much time, because there's very little to do.
Before or after October?
Before, if we can.
Before October.
Before the board takes action, which is why I say it would have to be the end of October. Because these are essentially replacement projects, not new construction of new types with new intensities. It's, it's a much more straightforward process.
Thank you.
Replacement projects having much less environmental review.
I'd like to make that couple of comments. Or is there still question period?
Well, you know, I feel like, we did have a couple, actually, questions raised by the audience, maybe that we can address those too, and then if we have some questions and comments, we'll go to that. But could, do you have a comment regarding our last public speaker who spoke about the angle of the new voting launch ramp?
Yeah, I don't know if anyone, is there anyone in the booth in the back? If we could pull up slide 35, I might be able to show you, I think, if I understood if the speaker's still here. Oh, right there, okay. What he was talking about. I don't think he was talking about the angle, I think he was talking about proximity. If you look on page 45, if. Yeah, if you look at page 45, you can see the old, yeah, there it is, no. Yeah, item 45, slide number 45, there you go. You can see the existing launch ramp. We actually have similar concerns, but different answers. You can see the dotted line, this is the existing launch ramp, and this is the proposed. Now, maybe the proposed could be slid over a little. One of our concerns is that as boats launched, they were aiming directly for the end of the Small Boat Marina, and we have had some problems with that. We had one about a month ago, Jack, about a month ago, where someone leaped out because his trailer was starting to separate from his car, and forgot to put the car in park, and launched his RV, his trailer, his boat, the whole works. And that's not terribly uncommon. It's not common, but it's less uncommon than I would like. I think what the gentleman here, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, is talking about is that this is closer to the Small Boat Marina, however, the launching is straight out to avoid this, this aiming. And the turning is intended to be a little easier, instead of this tight angle backing turn that you have with the trailer to get to the ramp now. But as I said, if he's concerned about proximity, maybe we could slide that over a little bit more. Is that, was that your concern?
Yeah, and then as they're coming into the launch ramp, also, they're turning that corner a little tighter, so you want to go to the southernmost.
If you want to go to the southernmost.
You know, what Kate was asking, they're also having that dock line there, they have split underneath.
Oh, he's talking about up in here.
They have lurked, got on the south side of that dock area, coming out.
Yeah, right, right here. You're talking about right here.
Right.
Yeah, which would also be helped by sliding it just a little further to the right.
Thank you. Good comment. And then when you were mentioning building heights, you're just, you're talking about an envelope of where you could go, not necessarily where your plan, where.
Right, since there are no plans at this point, it's hard to tell. I'm just, since the buildings are now at, I think the tower at Fisherman's Wharf right now is at almost 50 feet, and the bulk of the buildings are at over 35, with 35 allowed. We're assuming that it will be, some areas may be higher and some may be lower.
Thank you. And then we'll go to Supervisor Flynn. Would you like to make?
I don't have any questions. I have comments.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of suggestions, I guess. We're looking at now separating the water side and the, the land side. And I had talked about the idea that we have, one thing that links it all together is the public facilities, if you will, everything from the pedestrian paths to the parking lots to the, you know, the parks themselves. And the idea that, you know, we do kind of have this one link to all of them. And I had talked before about maybe getting a subcommittee together, either some people who are experienced walkers out there and would be able to help us in terms of trying to determine good walking paths, linkos to the parks, having some standards in place, which aren't in place presently, from everything from sign guidelines to lighting to parking lots to landscaping. And that way, we can get some consistency as these different, and there are so many right now, projects are coming before us, so that we can have some consistency, but also be able to link those, those two together. And I wanted to get your comments on that, and maybe at the next time we come forward, if the board is supportive of the concept of getting that kind of subcommittee together to get input from the residents on those particular aspects, that we might bring that one forward, too.
I think particularly with the pedestrian path, that's an excellent idea to bring in some people with experience. I'd suggest you go beyond the residents, not that the residents, but of the immediate harbor, but also go to some nearby hotels where they have visitors who walk, because they get a fair amount of input back from their guests, what they liked and what they didn't like. Would be very helpful in terms of identifying signage problems, walking path problems. I think that's very helpful. With the parks, it's a little harder to figure out. We did talk about this idea of a unifying, you know, connector between these two plans, but as I said before, for example, until the Casa Serena plans are done, we don't know where those parks might go. And to hold back the marinas until we have a final plan on the hotels, I'm not quite sure how to make that work. I'm not saying it's not a good idea, I'm just, I'm a little puzzled. The pedestrian paths are easy. We know more where they're going to go, and it's going to be mainly along the edge of the harbor. And I think getting input is just a great idea. With the parks, I think we're going to have to give it more thought.
You know, if we do have a very vibrant pedestrian path, you have people coming just to go do that loop and do that walk and have that joined with maybe some of the equipment in the parks. And then I just, finally, I was glad to see in your presentation this concept regarding a policy for slip sizes. I think that's really important to make sure that we are recognizing that we need to be able to balance both, you know, the economic factors, but also making sure that we have good access for the small boaters out there. And it's always good to have that balance anyway, depending on where the economy's going. So I'd like the board to have that discussion, maybe at a future time, to essentially say, you know, this is, this is what we want to see out there. And to me, that would be assuring that there's a balance. You know, we've all read in the paper, you know, this article is showing just all these yachts taking over in certain areas, and I'm sure that's not what we're looking for here. I'm sorry.
I have a chat. Yes. On the coordination, not necessarily, not necessarily making it all uniform, is that important? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot my mic. The coordination of landscaping plans and et cetera, who is responsible right now? Is that not the city of Oxnard on the parking lot landscaping and that? Or is that us? I mean, that has always been a problem.
Yes, it is, it is a problem, and it's one that we have, it's a, it's a combined issue. On some of the parking lot areas, they are within the leaseholds, and it's the lessies' responsibility. And the county has not had in the past standards or guidelines about those landscape requirements. And we should make a note of that, if you would, because we have talked about having a more unified landscape plan. On the bulk of the west side, which gets the most attention in terms of landscaping, there's an agreement, the old annexation agreement with the city, where the city does the maintenance and the planning and so forth there. And the city's consistent argument is they can't maintain this at a higher level than they do the remaining parks in the city, and so they're very careful not to overdo it. We kind of like to overdo it. So we may need to work more with them on how, how to do that in a way that doesn't, doesn't hurt the city's other park areas, so.
Do we have, I know we have Friends of the Harbor, but is there a lessee association?
There is, and I was going to say, they're interested in unifying the signage and replacing some of the somewhat dated signage we have now as part of this whole effort. Yeah. Old.
I, I think that's great, and they could help in financing some of the landscape maintenance, but also, again, wanting to make sure that we have input, not only from the lessies, but also the publics, when we're establishing things like sign guidelines.
Right.
Supervisor Flynn.
Thank you. There's a lot of people here today, and we welcome you to this meeting. Happy that you're here. The grand jury is here. I recognize a few faces from last year's grand jury. And I just want to say that I gave a report this morning, and I hope that if you would like a copy of it, it's about two major issues at the harbor that you call me, and we'll get you a copy somehow. In listening to Lee Quaintance and his comments, if I may try to interpret what he was talking about, he's saying that this is a roadmap. And this roadmap is pretty much before us. And we're being asked to give some directions to the roadmap. And what I hear Lee Quaintance saying, and let me tell you, audience members, he's, he's here a lot on the harbor issues. What I hear him saying is, we want to be involved. So if we're going to learn anything from our experience that we've had for the last two or three years, where we've had lots of acrimony, we've had lots of disagreement, we need to find a way to overcome that. Now, every board member has a regional facility, I think, in his or her district. And regional facilities, when they're next to communities, have problems. We have to recognize that they're going to have problems, but those problems can be overcome. Let me just give you an example with Kathy Long's district. She has a major regional facility, the Port of Waynimi, but she has a city that has a lot of trouble with what goes on at the Port of Waynimi. So that's an issue that is an example of what we're talking about here. I do think we need to learn from the Bisc, and we need to learn from all the issues that we've been discussing for the last few years, and try to figure out, well, what have we done wrong? Why have we had all this acrimony? Certainly, I've been in the middle of the acrimony. I admit that. But that's a position I had to take. It's not one I like to take. But let me tell you what I think we need to do. We need to establish leadership in each one of the sectors of the harbor. For instance, with the lessies. The lessies need to step up and show some leadership that shows some sensitivity to the community around them. Once you show that sensitivity, then we're going to be able to overcome some of these issues. There've been some great lessies, there've been some real poor lessies. The, the, the idea that the lessies and the community are separate just doesn't make any sense. You're not separate. You're together. You're going to have to be sensitive to each other. Just, in the same token, the community has to have leadership in recognizing that the harbor needs to have some kind of a balance in the economy, so the economy is going to remain strong in order to maintain the harbor. So that's, that's an example of the kind of leadership we need from them. I remember with the lessies, not too many years ago, they were always divided. Why were they divided? The Marina owners of their leases did not care for the activities of the landowners, like restaurants. So what beat the Strawberry Festival, one reason, out of the harbor? What was the reason? The Marina operators and owners of leases simply did not like all those people taking up parking spaces that their boaters needed to have. And so there's a lot of antagonism. So you need to come together as a unit, as a lessies' association. Friends of the harbor, well, that's fine, but as a lessies' association that has a purpose, a defined purpose. So I challenge you to do that, lessies. And I know you all, and I like you all, but you've got to do that. As far as the board is concerned, the board needs to reach out, try to answer the questions that Lee Quaintance brings up. Lee isn't here except for one purpose. He said, I want to be involved with this roadmap, and you didn't let me be involved with this roadmap. This is the first time I've seen it. That's not good public cooperation. That's not seeking public input. So board members, you have regional facilities in your district. I have a regional facility in my district called Channel Islands Harbor, but I'd like you to be a little more sensitive, as I would be with your arguments with Waynimi and the Port of Waynimi. We've got to be sensitive to those things. We can't just ignore the Lee acquaintances of this world and the Vicks of this world, who are always here. The board has to also be responsible for the economy of the harbor. I see a couple of staff people who kind of annoy me, because they're laughing. They're laughing because they think public involvement is a big joke. It's not a joke, fellas. It's, it's got to happen. Community leadership, you know, you have the CSD, you have Beacon, and you have some individuals who have an interest in the harbor. I would like to see you try to come together with one unit, if you will, to be participating in everything that happens at the harbor. The same thing with the lessies. I'd like to see you do that. The harbor itself, you've got to change your culture, you've got to change your culture of public involvement. The public has to be involved. The public has to be involved. You don't own this harbor. I don't own this harbor, but we're working this harbor in the public trust. Therefore, I'd ask you to change your culture about non-inclusion of the public and the decisions that we have to make. That's why we're here. That's why we have the kind of government we do. Public involvement. Social issues are there for us to look at and try to resolve, and yet maintain the balance, as Johnny Johnson said this morning, of the economy of the harbor. But it is a public harbor. I read an article in yesterday's Times about long boats, yachts, 60, 80 feet long, and they're on the increase. And the people that were quoted, with exception of Lynn Krieger, I'll hand it to you, Lynn, with exception of you, the other harbor operators acted like they were operating a private harbor. It's a public harbor. It's a harbor for everyone. Small boats, large boats, and if we can make that economic balance work, then we've got to do that. I would hope that we would make the harbor more friendly to the public, so when the public comes down there, and I think I'm repeating what you've said, Linda Parks, is a pedestrian walkway, a bicycle path, so that people come down to that harbor, and they've got something to come down there for, something that's not going to cost them anything. They can enjoy that harbor simply by walking around it, completely around it, or using their bicycles. As far as the issues, I would like to see the harbor commission become more public. I would like to see the harbor commission get into the nuts and bolts of leases, so they can take apart those leases, so that when we receive a lease at this board, we're assured that that lease is a good lease. That lease is a lease for the public. That lease remembers the taxpayers. That lease remembers the owners of the harbor. That's what I would like to see that commission do. As it is now, it's nothing but a rubber stamp commission. It's not working. Let's change that, make it work. There are some issues like slip size, which I've gone into, and other specifics, but let me say this to you. I will dedicate myself to the leadership role that I think this board has to have, but I would hope the board members here today would not oppose something just because John Flynn says it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Long, did you have comments?
Yes, I do, thank you. First, I appreciate the public in attendance today. This is a study session, and it's a follow-up to the first study session. And what the staff has done is taken the direction and comments from the board from the first study session and put it into this document as a concept for the board to say, yes, you captured what we directed, or what we discussed, and we'd like you to now move forward in concept to use your time efficiently, use the taxpayer dollars efficiently, and move on continuing the good work to really take this harbor to the next level of both the public access piece, the taxpayer investment piece, and to assure that it is the fine jewel that it is. I would like to thank the grand jury for being here. I think that the report that came out was an excellent report. I think that you spent six months of research, doing the best you could, to go through mounds of paper, to provide then a report out to the public as to the issues related to Channel Islands Harbor. And I think in that report, you clearly said that the harbor director has been doing an excellent job in that harbor, all things considered. Now, does that mean there's room for improvement? There's always room for improvement, and I think the recommendations you made related to process and public and transparency, the board said today that we're all in agreement with that, and we will work to do what we absolutely can to implement a better process, a public process, an open process. Today is not an action, final action. Today is not making decisions in a vacuum. Today is really looking at what the staff has done to pull together information from the prior report. And I have to disagree with Mr. Flynn slightly in that the Port Renimi Harbor District dispute with the city of Port Renimi and with two elected bodies is different than what this board has a responsibility as the elected body for the harbor district, the Channel Islands Harbor district. I think that what the staff has done in making this presentation really comes from a couple of things. One, in 1998, this board voted to separate the land side from the water side. That was a policy direction. And that was a policy direction that said to then the harbor director and her staff to go forth, work with the investors in the harbor, with the community in the harbor, and the coastal commission, which is in many respects the final authority on things that happen in the harbor, and make sure that, again, we're doing everything we can to bring this harbor up to a higher level than frankly, the public works plan that's currently in place, that was put in place in the 80s, has long outlived its time. We have now leases that are coming up for renewal or reinvestment, revisiting. We have vacancies. We have deteriorated conditions. We have leases that we're now seeing have huge holes in them that have given us lots of challenges and problems, inept leases and deterioration. So the public works plan has outlived its time. By moving ahead with continuing to do study sessions, continuing to go out to the public, and I still think there is an opportunity, and fully expect that we will have that opportunity for a charrette process in the sense of the areas of landslide, land side and water side, to be able to, as the work is done by staff that puts more substance to the concept, that then you have something to go out to the public with, to then get input and suggestions and, you know, a subcommittee to look at the pedestrian access around the entire harbor. I think those are all positive things to do. I think the question of whether we're going, you know, trying to run all the small boats out of the harbor, we heard today, we have currently 100 small boat slips that are vacant. And we've had that number for over a year now. So we also know that our market is below market as far as what we charge for boat slips. So we're not running anyone out of the harbor in the sense of small boaters, recreational boaters. We are committed to that as a part of the long-term future envision for the harbor. I don't think that that has changed from this board. I think to be able to move ahead and develop the cluster concepts is one, a good, again, a direction the board, just in the 98 vote, said to the harbor district, to our harbor director and team. I think that noting that we have a lot of work already underway in the land side piece because of the investors who have stepped forward to say, we wish to invest in the land side and in the water side. And I think staff's comments related to particularly the water side and the California Coastal Commission staff, looking at working with them, both for their time consideration and workload demands, makes sense to continue to move ahead with the concepts of a water side development of the public works plan for the replacement projects that are needed because the timing on those is not going to be the extensive work that will be required for the land side piece. So I think that staff is on the right track, and I think that they should move ahead and continue the good work.
Yeah. Supervisor Long. Supervisor Bennett, you have some comments?
Yes, thank you. I'll try to say this as quickly as possible, this complicated issue, and I know it can be a bit boring. The length of time to get things done in the harbor is enormous, in that we essentially spent from 2001, my perspective, we spent from 2001 to about 2005 just trying to renegotiate the leases so we actually had the authority to be able to start to do, make these changes that we're making now. Now, the leases that we renegotiate, they have five and six and seven-year terms on them, and that's the length of time it's going to take the applicant to actually go through the coastal commission process and get all the approvals, and then actually start the construction. So what will measure whether we're making progress or not will really be about six or seven years from now, whether we've actually, things just don't change fast. So I would offer that that is a, just a fundamental challenge with harbors and all the permitting that has to go forward. And then I just want to talk about trying to move effectively, appropriately, efficiently, but still within the right public process. Trying to move in this process, you're constantly balancing things that have you move forward, things that you pressure to move forward and pressure to not move forward. I would offer, you know, we heard today, hey, this plan is very different from what's down there now. And that's exactly right. And some people don't want something very different from what's down there now. Meanwhile, other people are constantly saying, the harbor's run down, the harbor's in terrible shape, and why don't you get something done with the harbor? That's tension that's out there that we have to navigate through. You also have to navigate through the whole issue of, if you do want to do something, you also need to make sure you do it with the appropriate public process. And then that can cut both ways. You can make mistakes and cut corners on the appropriate public process. I would rather this have come out before today, a mistake. Also, on the other hand, people can take the public process and just use it to just delay and stop, and they can go to the extreme of one lawsuit, and as soon as that one's over, another lawsuit. And so both of them can have errors in them as we try to navigate. You know, the thing with small slips and large slips, you know, it certainly is an issue that you have to find some way to try to navigate between an interest in trying to make sure that small slip owners, that people who are interested, still have appropriate access, but that you're not so far off that, you know, you have a shortage. Everybody wants to rent out the large slips, and you don't have any of those, and you have 100 shortage in the small slips. What do you do? How do you do that, and how do you not move your small boat slips out? So it takes me to this issue, which is sort of a fundamental issue. Is this generally an appropriate way to move forward? And my first question, I guess my first statement is, the information in this document is essentially the same information that was presented to us at our first study session. I just want to confirm. They're not very much changed here, right? There was this concept of the Heron Rookery is probably the one new thing in here. So is this something that we're sort of springing on everybody, and nobody knew that this was what the harbor department was talking about? No, this is what we had in the study session. And that first study session was, this is what we're thinking about at the harbor department. Does anybody else have anything else they're thinking about? It was a completely open public process, and quite frankly, we didn't hear a lot of other ideas. And we gave staff direction. We said, come back sometime with, if this is what you're thinking about, come back with how you propose to move forward. Today's meeting is how staff is proposing to move forward, more than it is revealing. I know a lot of the grand jury was here at the first study session and saw many of these same things at this point in time. So reasonable public process, I think. You have one study session, this is what we're thinking about, and then we say, come back. But what we missed was not having this out so people could say, okay, what are you coming back with? That's the only delay that I have. And then the question is, is it piecemeal to break the land from the water? Is that a piecemeal approach? Or is it a healthy, appropriate way to say, let's get something done because, this is what my perception is, it is so hard to get something done. The land use items are the ones that are most susceptible to all of your environmental and sequel lawsuits and all of those delays. So if you tie all of your water improvements up with your land improvements, you could be tied up for decades in lawsuits about the land side and never, ever even get the water stuff done. I guess I would call it piecemeal if we were coming in with one marina at a time doing the water side, but it strikes me that it's the appropriate balance. Is it as comprehensive as you'd like? And you'd like to say it's all linked. But if you link it all together, you may paralyze yourself in terms of never being able to get something done. At least you could get the water side done and give people that confidence that at least the docks are not sinking, and we have the improved docks. So I generally like that concept. The one issue is this issue of this, and so I have a thought, but I want to hear from the other supervisors about how to address that.
The fact that we didn't have this in advance, you know, that's the one thing that would have been, in my mind, helpful.
Supervisor Michaels?
Well, I agree, it would have been helpful, but is it a showstopper? No. Basically, for the reasons that you said, this is a continuation of the first meeting, and all of this information has been out, other than the Heron Rookery. And I really believe that it is important to separate land side and water side, and part of that reasoning is, in my mind, because the coastal commission is very interested in access to the water side, and that is going to move more quickly. That's, the other part of that is that we talk about small boats and large boats, they're not going to be able to use their boats at all if our docks are sinking, and if they're unsafe, and if the restrooms are awful, which some of them are. And so it makes perfect sense to me, in light of the commission and the staff, to move forward in that way. I don't consider that piecemealing at all. And, you know, it seems to me that, with all due respect to some of the people who come down here and testify, there's always something wrong with the public process, and the request is always to go back and try it again in a few months. That doesn't work in a public-private partnership, which is what this harbor is. The business people can't keep waiting and waiting and waiting. They're poised to make tremendous investment into this publicly owned harbor. But if we continue to delay and delay, and they don't see improvements in the harbor which improve their business, they're going to go away. And that's not good for the harbor either. I truly believe that this is the right approach. The fact that you look at the PWP, right now, we're out of compliance with it anyway. I mean, when it was adopted and certified, the buildings were already in place that were taller than what it said. So I believe that looking at the harbor as a whole for those certain items, height restriction, landscaping, view corridors, signage, yes, it's critical to look at all of it for that because you can decide where you want your view corridors, your parks, that kind of thing. But as far as the leasehold improvements, it doesn't make sense to me to try to do all of those at one time. You would overwhelm our staff, coastal commission staff, probably the courts, and nothing would ever get done. And I think that may be the objective of some, to see nothing ever done. And that's natural. The one other comment that I would make is, the harbor commission was established for the purpose of advising the board on boating and harbor-related issues because it is realized, and I think it's true, that none of us are boaters, much like we have the aviation advisory committee, which is supposed to be composed of aviators who understand how an airport needs to work for safety and for other issues. And I believe that's why we have the harbor commission. I don't, I'm not a boater. I don't know anything about, you know, which way to sail, other than the pointy end goes first. So that's what they're for. They are not our business advisors. And I doubt that many of the harbor commissioners are truly qualified to review leases and business decisions for the harbor. That's why we have a harbor department. That's why we have a board of supervisors. And I do not believe it's in the best interest of the public for them to try to be negotiating leases. It doesn't happen in the private sector, and it shouldn't happen in the public sector. Our responsibility is to negotiate the best lease on behalf of the taxpayers. It's the private side's attorneys or themselves' responsibility to try to negotiate the best lease for the business owner. And therefore, we usually end up in, and I know we have in the last few leases, ended up with win-win situations, and I think that's why we see the support of our lessees, and some of them are here today. Without the lessees, you can Without the lessees, you can kiss the harbor goodbye because the county, the taxpayers cannot afford to support the harbor 100% on public tax dollars. And so, it is a partnership, it should be a partnership. And I believe the one thing that Mr. Flynn said that I can agree with wholeheartedly is that it's going to take both sides to understand each other's roles and the value of each other. And the greater community needs to be supportive of the board's decisions for the harbor. And so, I respectfully disagree, and this has come up before, but I will absolutely fight to keep our leases from being publicly dissected by people who are not qualified to publicly dissect leases because I don't believe it is in the best interest of the taxpayer. Other than that, I think this is a great direction. I do, I am sorry that the information wasn't out ahead of time, but there's no showstoppers in this. There's nothing new in this, except one thing, which is absolutely positive, and that's the discussion of, no, we talked about it, but what, I think that all we can say is we're sorry. And if the next time this comes back, we will make sure, won't we, that the information gets out, you know, ahead of time. Because at that point, now we really are moving into truly serious discussions for public out, you know, public outreach and public input. So, with that, I'm supportive of the direction.
Thank you. You know, I think we are in a really good position because I think just a month or so ago, we're talking about maybe $100 million potential investment going on in our harbor. Now, we're looking at almost 200 million. So, we're, we're right now seeing a lot of interest in the harbor. And I think it's really incumbent on us to begin early to start saying, "Here are some of the things that we want to include as these projects come forward." And this is the antithesis to me of piecemeal. This is actually saying, "Here's a whole bunch of stuff that's all coming before us." And it gives us an opportunity to do things like establish a committee. And I would like, you know, if, when we come back again, and we certainly need to continue this dialogue, to look at forming such a committee and what kind of guidelines we can in terms of that, you know, doing this walking path, pedestrian path. And actually, there's bond monies out there right now, too, for recreation trails, and we could probably tap into that. We've discovered today that there really is inconsistency with parking lots, you know. How can we establish how many cars should be in a parking lot and what kind of landscaping and what percentage should be in landscaping if we, you know, don't have any kind of authority on that? So, maybe working with the city of Oxnard and trying to get coordination there so we can have a standard for parking lots, guidelines for signage, guidelines for lighting. I think these are things that we see in cities everywhere whenever they're, you know, coming forward with projects. It's something certainly that we can put in place at the harbor and, and to come back and look at ways that we can establish some guidelines and, and working not only with the lessees, but also got some experts out there in architecture and others that would probably be willing to volunteer and give us their advice. And also looking at landscaping, that's a really important aspect. So, I see this all as a really good thing. We have a lot of investment opportunity out here. It gives us an opportunity to, you know, get in at the beginning and say, "Let's get some nice consistency, let's make sure that we have high-quality design and consistency out there as these projects come forward." We also need, I believe, to come forward with a policy and maybe some suggestions from staff can come forward in terms of the small slip policy. What percentage are we looking at? Do we want to just make it blanket throughout? Or we want to say through, you know, in the end, this is the amount of small slips that we'd like to have, you know, as we look at all the slips out there? Separating the two, will give a set opportunity to land from, from the water. Also, looking at the concept of building heights and where are your view sheds? I think that's really great to get in now, you know, before we have to start looking at it as each building comes through. No, we've already established, this is the view shed, so this is what kind of building heights we're looking over there. So, we have some good opportunities. You can see my backgrounds in planning, so I'm very, look, very concentrated on the land use aspects of this. But the bottom line is, I think, though, we need to set an example here at the board of supervisors that is going to permeate down and, and working together on this. We heard some positive, Mr. Flynn liked what he read in the LA Times on, on your quotes, Ms. Krieger. But I think that we need to continue from the board perspective to do everything we can to assure that we have a balance, both in the participation of the public and private sectors at the harbor, a balance in the slips, sizes, if you will, and then establishing some good guidelines so what comes before us is going to be high-quality. I'll now turn it over, I guess Supervisor Bennett, you had a motion that you wanted to make?
Well, I just wanted to discuss the issue about, I'm actually looking for input from, from the board members. I mean, this is our second study session. So, we had one study session where this information was presented and then we said, "Yeah, we generally like this and let's go forward." And we take it, we took public testimony then. We don't have a lot of people down here for public testimony today. This is the second study session. I would think that if people have strong feelings about the harbor, et cetera, they probably would have been here or contacted us with, with some of that. So, I'm just trying to find a way for people to be able to respond to the suggested directions from staff here before we sink in significant dollars into environmental review because once we're started down into environmental review. So, I'm trying to find what's the right timing. So, I have a question for staff. When, when, if, if the board followed your directions here, when would you begin environmental review actions?
Well, some of it, we already have environmental knowledge because of the, when we did the EIR for the BIS, we collected some base data that we could use. We would start fairly soon. We, we probably will do like we did the last time, and I appreciate whoever did it first might be Supervisor Michaels. These are substantially the same projects. And after we came here to the board and marched with them, we also made the same presentation at the harbor commission, for those who are interested to stay. And we will probably do that again if the harbor commission wants us to.
So, make this presentation at the harbor commission?
Right. And we, we got some comment, but not very much either, at the harbor commission to these remarks. One possibility is to put it up on the, on the county website, as the grand jury talked about, and leave some opening for public comment that way on what's happening. But we would, we'd like to begin work particularly on the marina side. The coastal commission has indicated some opening in staff workload for us to start working with them. So, we'd like to at least start on the marina side projects.
So, if I could ask our clerk, we have, for our calendar for next week, it says 1:30, ethics training with four question marks behind it. What's that? It is a go, right? Okay. I just want to ask the board in term, the board, the board in terms of your input to give the public a week to be able to contact us during the week, contact us next week, and we do a final vote on this. I, I'm supportive of the basic concept here and stuff, but does that, trying to find out what that does. What's the board thinking, what's staff thinking about in terms of timing?
I think we need to give staff a little bit more time to put together another staff report, make it available to the public, and if we're going to be doing some voting. And there's some suggestions that have been brought forward that I think needs a little bit of time to put together. So, I would like to, I don't want to delay you in any way in terms of your moving forward, but I think also we need to be able to come back with a, another staff report, have it out in advance.
Some of the items, as I heard in the staff report back, might be, for example, a committee or a group, working group, you might call it, on the pedestrian walkway. I don't know how tied that is to the marina projects. I'd like to communicate with each of you. I have some ideas, like the Mandalay Bay Homeowners Association might have some walking people, the Beach District may have some walking people, so forth. I don't know if you need to do that to give us, to have all of that ready, to give us the fundamental, you know, are you comfortable with this idea of clustering the projects in two directions? That would give us a great deal of information if we could know that much today. And then we're happy to come back with another study session. In specific answer, I was just checking with Ms. Culbertson if she could be here next week. Unfortunately, I am not. But we're pretty much on the same page on this and she's, she could come back if you wanted to do something in the next week or two.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Long and then Bennett, or Long and then Flynn?
We look a lot alike.
I just said one about two weeks.
Okay, Supervisor Flynn?
Well, why doesn't it work?
Well, I won't be here, but I could get Ms. Culbertson.
The reason I think we need a little time is that we did make some comments about several issues, and I think that you need to, to weigh those in your next report that would go out to the public. Otherwise, what we did here today is nothing, I'm here to just send the same report out.
When's the next harbor commission meeting?
The 19th, which I think is next week.
Because you're going, you're going to present that there, we can get some?
I wasn't, we are going to be arranging at next week's harbor commission meeting. The CEO is going to be sitting in at that harbor commission meeting for me. We're going to be arranging a special meeting because we have a number of other things we need the harbor commission to do, and I was going to do it then.
Because I would be getting the input on this also. Supervisor Michaels?
Yeah, you know, it seems to me that the basic question here is, are we comfortable with the clusters? I don't think that's a difficult question to answer, and I don't think in any way answering that question prevents public input on, you know, a future meeting or a future look to the harbor. And so, you know, I think that just giving staff the go-ahead that, yes, the cluster idea is a good idea. Put the report up on the county website, and we always accept comments. We're not doing anything final in the next few weeks. All we're saying is, yeah, proceed in this direction, the landside, waterside. And in my mind, if we put the report up on the website, if there's a special meeting in the harbor commission that gives people ample time to either email in concerns and comments, there's not a lot here for people to comment on. It's not like we have an absolute project. We're, we're talking about how to handle the projects as, when they come forward. So, I think it would be, I think that the public will be served with the ability to comment if it's on the website, if it's at the special meeting at the harbor commission and in the meantime, that staff can start moving forward on the concept. I didn't hear anybody say that the concept of the two clusters, that they had any disagreement before.
For coming back to the board, if you'll excuse me, this is appropriate time, I would suggest that with some of the questions that have been asked and taking a look at some of the park issues, pedestrian pathway issues, all those related issues, that it might be more beneficial than, rather than trying to cram some information together in a week, which is certainly not, again, going to allow us to put anything out for the public to see, that we come back to you the 12th or the 19th of September with an update for where we are, if in fact the board feels comfortable saying the general idea of clusters and having only two comprehensive plans, rather than, I mean, it is allowable by law. You could say, "No, forget this whole thing. Let's do this project by project and just deal with it as we go." And we did verify with counsel to the coastal commission that, yes, that is an acceptable way to proceed. We don't think it's a particularly good way to proceed. So, we're recommending to you that we do some more comprehensive planning than that. If you're comfortable with that, we could, you could get that far today in directing us just how to work in your absence, and then we'll come back in September with a kind of a halfway point update. Here's where we are, here's what's happening, assuming Ms. Rodriguez can find this time on an afternoon calendar. Huh? You can now? Either one is free.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Bennett.
So, that would be a halfway point before you would be bringing back a actual project for us to vote on?
Right.
This would be sort of like study session three?
Right.
Right.
All right. Well, that, because quite frankly, if we just wait a week, some of these, you're not going to be able to get everything out. So, what, what I'd like to, to have us do is direct you to get this information out so that it is out there. So, everybody knows this is sort of where you are at this point in time, so people can contact us, get ready. Everybody knows that we're going to have another study session in September where you will take us further, but that, I hear everybody generally saying-
It'll be with the agenda.
-the basic concept, but that we're not making any decision on, on embracing this and going forward with the final environmental documents and that kind of stuff until we have study sessions.
Can we just give me a direction on how to study it? And then I think that it's fine to do the two clusters, you know, that's just a way to, to look at the pro-
It's administrative.
And quite frankly, I think we saw it off on the two cluster approach last time, conceptually. Would this include then, when you come back in September, you'd be coming back with your ideas about getting a committee for the walkers and that, and those kinds of things?
All of that.
That's great. Okay.
That's great. And with the next work-study session, with that, you go ahead and not only notice the people who came today who submitted cards, you may want to submit a card, but also the people that came the last one and submitted cards because that one, we had more people testifying, and then that's even where this whole walking path thing got started. So, it would be nice to include those people and make sure that we can have their input. All right? So, I think that we're, we're happy with this and-
And that we still have a reasonable chance of being available for the end of October in terms of being able to move forward?
Andy, does that law at the end of October?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look forward then to having you come back with a, kind of summing this up in September, then in our meeting and then.
I appreciate your understanding. We're sometimes running faster than our feet will carry us.
Thank you very much. We have the direction, come back in September and, yes, thank you. Motion a second.
The direction is to have a third study session.
Absolutely. With information provided in the agenda packet in advance of the meeting. All right, thank you. We have a three-zero on that one. Supervisor Flynn, are you in support of that motion, come back in September? We'll go with three-zero. Thank you very much. And that will conclude then our board of supervisors' meeting. We've done everything on our packet. And we will adjourn to closed session. Do you expect an announcement from closed session?
No, there will not be an announcement.
Okay, thank you. And thank, thank everyone for coming. I really appreciate seeing everyone today.